Okay, the town of East Fishkill Planning Board meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Jason Pereskeba.
If everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming monthly meetings, one on November nineteenth and one on December seventeenth. We also have a special meeting for, on November fourteenth, that's a Thursday, not a Tuesday, that will cover the Montage Project and possibly the Summit Woods Projects. Right now, there's a few things before us for those, and since those are larger projects, we thought a special meeting would be helpful for those. So again, November fourteenth, November nineteenth, and December seventeenth are our upcoming meeting dates. And we have a couple of sets of minutes to approve tonight. So our August twentieth, looks like most of us were here. Do I have a motion to approve the August twentieth minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, and then I have the minutes of September seventeenth. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of September seventeenth? Also, it looks like most of us were here.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any tensions? Okay, great. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for Cassidy Memorials at fifty-one Orchard Place. Pam, do we have everything we need to open the public hearing? Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Hello? Do we have your, I think we had a drawing or a plan, right? Do we have?
Pam's got it.
Can you tell?
If you want to give us just an overview of what we're doing, we'll get the plan out. Since it's a public hearing, we like to have it out.
Basically, what I'm looking to do is just to move my monument display and the business from one side of the road to the other side of the road. Because I can move it over on my piece of property because it touches industrial zone property. And I'd like to put the sign out by eighty-two and set the display back probably about twenty-five feet off the road.
Michelle, with regard to this sign, is there anything specific we needed for that? Or do we have everything we need?
He showed the location of where he wanted to place the sign on the original submission.
Okay.
So the planning board just needs to confirm that, and they're okay with that location.
Okay.
And it'd be great if you could do this by Halloween, right?
It'll be ready. I don't get any trick-or-treaters anywhere.
Put up on the...
Oh, up there.
Since it's a public hearing, do we have another copy we can share? We could even put it on the table or something if anyone from the audience wanted to see it?
That's the only one we have.
Mrs., it's a handful of stones. Thirty feet away.
Fifteen feet, yeah, about fifteen stones, yeah. Fifteen monuments. Is there any reason you're doing it? Just because I can. And move it over and clean it up. And the big thing I want to do is put a concrete footing underneath it so they stay level. One guy suggested, why not leave it there? They're on level and it looks more like a cemetery, but I just want to clean it up and make it easier.
John, maybe when you're done, what we can do is we can move that to our front table here. Michelle, if I can trouble you to help us just put that out there. Does anybody from the board have any questions? I know it's pretty straightforward. This includes a special permit as well? For the home office? I don't know if we want to just walk through quickly. I know we meet the terms of the special permit, but maybe we can walk through that?
Sure. A special, a commercial business is allowed, certain types of commercial businesses are allowed by special permit if they're in a R-zone, a residential zone, as long as they're abutting an industrial property. And we consider that a transition property between residential and industry. So it's a commercial zone, and he's proposing an office and a display area for the monuments.
Okay. And Michelle, is there anything specific for the special permit that we had to verify or validate? Or is it just in that nature of it being next to the industrial properties, the only requirement for the permit?
Correct, in that he had the required parking, which he does.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
No.
Dave or Michelle, anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, Tom?
No.
All right. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to offer comment on the Cassidy Memorials' application? Anybody? Okay, we don't have any public comment. Do I have a motion to?
So moved, to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, thank you, Jason. I have a motion and a second.
What are you moving quick?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and we do have a resolution here. Does someone want to offer that? Everybody?
Sure. Excuse me, I dropped my phone. Resolution of final approval, the name of the project Cassidy Memorials, name of applicant Peter Cassidy, location fifty-one Orchard Place, resolution offered by Planning Board member John Cutler, whereas the town board passed a local law on August twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, allowing limited commercial uses on residential parcels that abut an industrial district by special permit to provide a better transition between industrial and residentially zoned properties. As whereas the applicant is proposing to relocate an existing monument business to his R-one-dash-three-zoned parcel at fifty-one Orchard Place, which abuts an industrial parcel. Whereas the applicant has applied for the special permit for a home office and display area for his monument business, and whereas the action is considered to be a type-two action under seeker and no further environmental review is required. And whereas the planning board held a public hearing on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and whereas the planning board has determined that such a final plan meets the town's requirements for the special permit, subject to the conditions set below. Now therefore, do we have any, I don't know if we... Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues a special permit to allow a display area for an existing memorial business on the property and a professional office to be located in his existing house in a residential district as proposed on the plan submitted on September sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Any additional conditions, Michelle?
No.
Tom? Okay.
Okay, be it further resolved that within five days of this adoption of this resolution, the chair or any or other duly authorized members of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from John. And votes as follows, Michael?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for world luxury motor cars at ten eighty-two Route eighty-two.
I'm not sure if you have, I believe, I believe that I made a few copies for the... What I'm trying to get in here or find out, how am I going to be able to park some cars right on the pavement in front of the dealership? And on the side where the sign is, across the way, it will be the same level as the pavement. And on the entrance side of the left-hand side where the windows are. So the way this plan is, it's really not serving us any good because the cars have been hitting. And every time my tenant tried to put cars in the front, he basically violates, you know, the town rules and, you know, and the guy keeps getting warning after warning after warning. So I had two previous tenants before that I lost them because of the same issue. There's no visibility. Cars coming in from the east side going that way, they can't see the property because of all the trees on the adjacent property to us. So it covers, there's no visibility for us. So the only visibility is on the west side, coming in from the church, going to east, that's the only visibility that you could see the cars, that's part. But the way it is right now, because of my tenant trying to display the cars and trying to, you know, basically sell some cars, he's having a hard time.
Can I just take a step back and explain? The current tenant has been, has a used car business, and he's been, gotten a few violations from the town for locating his vehicles off the paved area and off the location that was approved for sales of cars on the site plan. So, and he's also had a few violations for some signage that he's been putting out because he's trying to draw attention to the cars in that location.
Permanent sign or temporary sign?
Temporary signs, like the flags, things that are pretty typical.
Like for sale and stuff like that?
Pretty typical for a used car dealership. So he's received a number of violations, and he's came into us a while back and asked if he could potentially relocate some of the cars in an area that was not approved on the site plan for the cars.
Can I just step back further? Wasn't this originally just a detail shop, no car sales? And the former owner or somebody came in and then made application to provide for car sales?
Correct. I believe it's been like five years.
On the grass, yeah. So prior to this particular gentleman renting it, it did, there were some car sales related to it, but it was originally a detail shop. Then it became, and it was a pretty small car sales, and I think it was relatively high-end cars, car sales, so there was a pretty limited number of cars out there. But now it's a new tenant, and he's...
Different type of vehicles.
Different type of vehicles, and he's hoping to get more visibility for his business. So we were not able to allow that without him having, him modify his site plan. So the owner has made an application on his behalf to modify the site plan and ask the planning board if he can move some of the locations of the approved cars where they're supposed to be parked and also potentially add a few spaces. So that's what he's here to ask for at this point.
Okay. So where the cars are right now that caused the violation are on the grass in front of the property?
No, in the front of the property, it's paved. So according to the site plan, I'm not sure exactly because the way this site plan was designed before was some, you know, when it was done, I don't know why they didn't put it in the front. I guess they didn't have the need for it, or they never asked for it. But it's, the most critical part is to show you vehicles to the customers. I mean, you can't work from an empty shelf. So if you don't have cars in the front, people will drive by, they don't know what it is in there. And he's really having a hard time trying to make, you know, trying to make a living, trying to display cars. So he's in the middle where I don't want the town to keep giving me violations and upsetting the town and, you know. And I got an email from the town saying that, you know, your tenant is in a violation. And, you know, when I went there and the guy was like, what do you want me to do? He goes, I can't make a living, I can't sell cars, I can't display my cars. Every time I put a car or two or three in the front, they come in and tell me you have to move him. So I'm not, I don't want to put cars on the grass. We still have the setback. So we're not asking to go anywhere in the front on the grass. We just want to park him right on the pavement. And what I would like to see if I could pave, just follow the same, just follow the same line, pave the other side of it, which is, I believe, maybe approximately ten foot. Ten foot or something like that, ten square feet, maybe twenty square feet. I'm not going a lot, but just to follow, you know, clean, you know, so he doesn't park on the grass.
Okay.
I have a question. Is, there's a business in the back as well, correct?
Yes, sir, it's an auto detailing.
Okay, and so you're, there's not going to be any potential?
No, no, the auto detailing have its own parking, and the auto detailing, they come in, one, two, three cars, they go, you know.
Okay, so that's all being ironed out?
It doesn't need parking, they're not in the business to park cars in there. So basically, when the customer drops off a car, they clean it and he comes and pick it up, so they don't...
There was also a caretaker unit, is that still being used?
Yes, it's a caretaker, yeah.
Because I know there was concerns about parking and making sure that there was access for the apartment as well as fire.
Yeah, the caretaker is my brother, he, you know, he works for me, so he only goes home at night, you know. So there's nobody in there, so the detailing shop will be closed, there's no customers there. And there's only one car he has, so it's not like, it doesn't...
And I just want to make the planning board aware that the fire advisory board made a comment.
I've got them.
There was a request for parking spots on the front and the side of the building. This is right up against the building.
Front and two sides of the building, right, Michelle?
Yeah, and I think their reference to the side of the building is the spots right up against the side of the building. And they're, the fire department is not in favor of that because of the access. So they would prefer not to have the cars parked right up against the building, on the side.
So that was a concern for the, I believe, a while. They say they have a concern about it because they think that if, God forbid, something happened and the fire truck needed to go inside, they're not going to be able to go inside. But we have Royal Karting, they come in with the big truck, they go inside, pick up the garbage, and, you know, come out, so there's no problem in there.
I don't think Royal Karting though is actually picking up from your building. What the fire department is saying is they need access to the building itself. If something were to go wrong and they needed to arrive, they would want to potentially park in some of the space where those cars might occupy, next to the building.
Like a fire lane, almost.
Either an ambulance or something like that.
Okay, so if you, you know, I'm willing to work with the town, you tell me what's feasible to have, you know, some display on cars and, you know, some safety, you know.
Okay. So how many cars do you want to park along the front of the building?
So what we're looking for is four cars.
Four cars.
In the front of the building, right on the pavement.
Okay, and you're going to extend that pavement so that the cars?
No, no, there's pavement in there already. I'm not extending any of the pavement. What I'm trying to do, can I approach this one?
Sure, sure.
But currently, they're being displayed on the grass, right?
Yeah, if you see in here, this is, so this is the entrance. This is paved area, that's the grass.
Okay.
And there's a sign in here, that's my sign, and this is paved. What I'm looking for is just to pave this little section here so I could finish, you know, put in one, two, three, four cars. Because right now, there's no pavement there, and it's grass. So if you park on the grass, you know, when it's raining, it's messy.
Okay.
And if, so what we did is instead parking in here where you're saying...
I think that's where the FAB says they prefer not to have cars there.
Okay.
And then this is the other area that you're talking about across the front of the building, correct?
Yes, what's, yeah, that's the pavement, that's all paved. Everything here is paved. This is the only section that is not paved, and that's all grass.
Okay, because it seems like this line here is your edge of pavement, so the way these are...
No, that's the grass, that's landscaping. So there's a landscaping in here.
Right, so that's not, so you kind of have, it looks like a part of these parking spots are in the landscaping. So what we're asking is, are you trying to move these forward a little bit, maybe into this area?
No, I don't want to go on the grass, we want to stay behind, we're not going to go in the front.
But the grass behind, in front of your building, you have grass.
No, we have flower beds. We don't have, you know, it's not, it's a, just landscape, flower beds.
Okay.
So this is, you know, I have like a, kind of like decorative, I don't follow anything either.
Okay.
So this is whole, the whole thing here is blacked out already.
Okay.
So if he's not allowed to park in here, which is, he needed the spots, but, you know, safety comes first.
Right.
So I would like to see if the board will, with a special permit or whatever is required, so he could display some cars in the front, so he could sell, sell some cars and, you know, show his product.
Okay, okay. And then the cars that he currently has in the location here along this side of the building and here, you're not changing any of that, all those will remain the same.
None of that, right now, all he's getting the violation on, he can't park here. Every time the town inspector comes in and sees it, you know, he's not happy about it, so...
Right.
And, you know, I wanted to get it taken care of because I don't want to, you know, I don't want the town to be, you know, not happy with the situation.
Okay.
And it's just not serving anybody.
So it looks like you're trying to add four cars, three cars here? I see one, two, three.
It's basically, they're four cars, but I just, the way I draw them, you know, I...
So they can fit four there, and then an additional four in the front? So you would add eight additional parking locations?
Because we take in five from here now, so we used to park five in here, but...
But those are, that's not part of your approved plan, so...
No, no, that's exactly, you know, so we used to park five cars in here. And so we want to, so it's the five spots in here, there's four in here.
So how are the cars going to be parked there if you're never going to go on the grass?
What grass, I apologize.
Jason, if you want to...
So come over here.
Yeah, you got to look.
I'm just, I'm looking at, you know, the way it is maybe today with cars sitting on the grass like that. You want to move it back to the pavement here, how are you going to park these cars?
Just, and I, the same thing.
So if somebody wants to get this car out, you're going to pull this car out of here to get to... So you're not going to drive over the grass?
No, no, obviously.
Well, I don't know, you don't have a problem putting them on the grass here.
Well, that's when he first moved in.
I think that's a tenant, Jason. The gentleman's the owner.
He put them in there, and he didn't know any better.
Yep, and they're all on the other side, too.
Yes, like I say, that's the tenant, you know, so that's why I'm here, you know, trying to take care of this because of...
Michelle, what's permitted in this zone? Can we, can we allow these cars to be a little bit closer to the road so they get a little better visibility here?
You can, that would be lovely, but...
There's no signage changes planned.
No, no, we're not, we're not doing anything. We, the sign there exists, and the only thing, the town is not giving him an occupancy permit because of the violations.
Right.
So because of that, they're not giving him a proof to change the name on the sign. They say, you don't have an occupancy permit, we're not going to do that for you, you know, you got to take care of violations, and I'm trying to help the guy.
Okay.
Obviously, I don't want to see him go. This is my third tenant that, for the same issue, he left, broke the lease and left to say, I can't sell cars. I'm going to move on.
Okay.
So this particular site is within what the zoning code considers the hope-all hamlet? So we're not up against a hundred-foot setback that you would sometimes see on properties, if that's what you're referring to. I believe we had this discussion about the location of these cars, and the site plan was pretty specific back when the original Sarlo site plan was approved, and I don't know exactly what year that was, but there was a discussion about how many cars the planning board wanted to see out there, and they were concerned about the visibility of the cars and not making sure that it looked aesthetically pleasing. So that was all part of the discussion. There are a couple of other locations throughout town where cars are being sold, and there are some problems in some of those locations. So, you know, obviously, we're very concerned about what it looks like and that it's kept nicely and that the signage is, meets all the requirements of the sign code.
Just from looking at the front of your site plan, it looks to me like you may need to add a little bit of pavement along the front of the building as well if you're truly going to try to put four cars there all on pavement. It just looks narrow to me.
I've done it in the past when I was there originally, I parked them fine, no problem.
At an angle, maybe?
Yeah, I parked them in an angle. You see, when I was, when I was there, I was selling nothing but high-end cars, and the town never bothered me, never. They were, they loved the cars that I had. But, you know, with the other tenants, it seemed like, you know, with the quality in the cars that they're trying to display, he's not doing it in a neat manner, you know, which is, I don't like that, too, but... I tried to tell him, listen, you have to keep the landscape nice and clean, you know, your shrubs and everything's, you know, flowers, keep everything nice and neat, don't just make it a junkyard, you know. The guy's having a tough time, and, you know, I feel bad for him, but I'm trying to not to lose him, too, so...
Okay, okay. So Michelle, as far as the four cars in the front and allowing up to four cars on the side with a bit of additional pavement, we're not blocking any, and maybe, I'm sorry, maybe this is more for you, Dave, we're not blocking any visibility to get in and out of the property?
We would have to review that, you know, whatever.
So just to give you an idea, even if you allow me to park the four additional cars on the front, I'm staying, I'm still way behind the veterinarian hospital. So the veterinarian hospital is still ahead of me.
Has parking further, closer to the road?
Much further, you know, in the front of me, so I'm way behind him.
Okay.
I did confirm that.
Okay.
That is the case.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I don't want to ask for more, I want it to be, you know, a little bit to the back. This way, it's not an issue, you know, I don't want to go in front of anybody in that particular road.
Okay.
I don't think Dave's had a chance to look at the plan or the site distance yet.
Okay, and we're in discussion here, so we can... And Michelle, I don't know as far as this type of change, if this would be considered a minor change or if it would need a public hearing. I'm not, it seems like a minor change to me because it's only a little bit of pavement.
I mean, I think it's up to you guys to make that determination of whether or not you think that the, anyone would come out.
All right.
And it's probably whether or not you think the folks around it would be upset by the change.
Well, it sounds like there's trees on one side, and on the other side, the cars are much closer to the road to begin with, so I'm not sure.
That's my problem. If the gentleman that owns the property right next to me, he had his trees cut a little bit back where visibility on both sides of the road, it makes sense, right now, we only have one side.
Right.
By the time the people pass by, the veterinarian hospital have their cars way ahead of us. So they can't see anything, and we're not parking cars in the front, so people will drive by and they miss it. They don't know what it is in there.
Is anybody other than the town complaining about it?
No, nobody, I have...
Well, I'm just asking a question.
I don't know what generated...
I mean, is the town looking at it because we're getting complaints?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if it was a complaint that was generated or if he was just doing it as part of his due diligence.
So what started it, actually, to be honest with you, is he put some signs. And I believe the inspector was driving by, and he came in and goes, you can't put flags, you can't put banners, you can't put signs.
Right.
You need to remove all that. So his thing is, so how can I tell people what am I selling in here? You know, it's, this is not just a parking lot, it's a used car, so I need to tell them what year I'm selling this car, the price for this car, they tell him you can't do it. So kind of like, all right, how can you, how can you sell cars if you can't show what you're selling? And that's how it started. So I believe when they drove the second time, which he wasn't supposed to be doing that, he's got a picture of it there, he was parked all the way in the front on the grass when he wasn't supposed to be doing that.
So you're not asking to put up signs just to relocate the parking?
We're going to try to work with that, you know. Michelle is trying to help us out where we could do something nice and neat inside the glass without displaying, without doing anything.
Of the actual shop.
So, you know...
Potentially put some signage in the windows, which are currently blank right now, but they have to still meet the sign requirement in order to do that. And they're going to, they're going to propose some signage, and we'll see if, whether or not it's something that meets the code.
And putting the cars in the front of the building isn't going to block that? They'll be low enough, and the windows are high enough?
No, because the building is higher, yeah.
Okay.
Michelle, is there, should we strive for some uniformity as you look at the veterinarian parking? And then as you go... Yeah, I mean, because if you look at the veterinarian parking, it's almost up to the road.
Yeah, if you allow me to do that, same as the veterinarian, I would love to, then I'll black it up a little bit. That will help us a lot.
Is there, I think that's something that Dave would need to look at.
Yeah, so, yeah, that'd be good to hear back from you, Dave, if that...
There's a site plan, I'll show it to you.
Do you have the plan, if you can show Dave the plan that you have?
So this is, so this whole area, this whole grass, so the veterinarian, when they park the veterinarian right here, when they park, they park up to here, up to the front, because there's no grass, they park right up to the, to the road, because they don't have landscape in the front. So you could see how when they park their cars here, they block everything that they have.
With permission from the board, I would like to visit the site, uh, perhaps if, if you're available, we could meet out there.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Cause I think if Dave needs to see the site, let's have him look at the site because it would make sense to add additional paving here for where the cars are gonna be parked, I think that makes sense. So, y- you'll make a site visit and.
Appreciate it.
And then if it makes sense to align the parking with the veterinary clinic next door, I think I would agree, if you're going to do that, it needs more pavement. Right? Cause we don't want cars on the grass.
I'm trying not to ask for more, I'm trying to ask for something where this poor guy can just sell cars, so I don't want it to, you know, but if, if within the guidelines, just like my neighbors, I would love to do that.
Okay.
I don't expect an answer now, but I mean, okay, if they, if they do come out, uh, some kind of differentiator between people who are at the vet and the cars will probably be coming to play. So you might wanna think about that, how you're gonna say, by the way, these cars are getting their dog, you know, taken care of and these cars are.
Yeah, but if I, if you look. If you look at also, if you look at the property across the street from me, the plaza, they all park right up to the front. Same as the other, uh, properties next to me, when we drive by. All the cars are parked in the front, we the only one.
As I said, I, I don't answer it now, but it's something to think about.
Yeah.
So, my only comment also is that there was a total number of cars that were, was permitted on the previous site plan. So I think we need to make sure that we're staying within.
Um, Michelle, is there any issue with, um, impervious surface as well, or coverage on the lot? I'm not sure if the hamlet has a different requirement than.
It, it doesn't, but I haven't, I haven't looked at the coverage yet, so.
Okay. Alright, so, I think what we'll do then is we'll close our discussion for tonight. Let's have you back on our next meeting if possible, Dave, can you get to the site in the meantime? Let's have, let's make sure we know, um, what, what Dave recommends from a visibility perspective and if there's a change that you wanna make as far as adding paved surface or different alignment of the cars, that's fine. Otherwise, if you're comfortable with what you have proposed here, um, again, the fire advisory board is asking for the cars that are along that. Um, I think, I wanna say it's the east side, is it the east side of the building?
Yeah, yeah, so they, that's fine, so, we're, we're gonna take this, like, like I say, currently, what he does in there, he parks five, six cars. So, we're gonna eliminate those, but he needs something in the front.
Okay, okay. If you can coordinate the site visit with Dave, he can come out, he can look at the property with you and you guys can hopefully figure out the best alignment there that keeps the visibility for, so the cars entering and exiting the property have sufficient site distance.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, I'm sorry, just bear with me, I'm making notes. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the Hopewell Enterprises LLC on Hillside Lake Road and three seventy-six application.
Makes better TV. It makes better TV.
Better TV.
Evening all, how are you? Um, anybody's interested, Yankees are still down four nothing.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyway, um, Hopewell Enterprises, if everybody's familiar with Hillside Lake Road, okay, kind of down from the intersection of through three seventy-six. Um, there's a sixteen acre parcel, sixteen oh two, actually, that exists. It's in the R forty zone, um, has frontage all along Hillside Lake Road, okay? It's on the left side looking at the parcel to the left side of Sibelico, alright? Um, what's being proposed as part of this application, and I actually threw this together first, the first, cause it kinda gives you. We're effectively proposing, um, a subdivision and a lot line realignment. There's about a four acre parcel that's actually being transferred to Sibelico. We're not doing anything, there, there's no plans relative to site planning right now, as I understand, or anything relative to that, property's just moving from one property onto the next and because of the buts.
So essentially, kind of a buffer?
And again, what we're proposing is a subdivision and lot line realignment. Um, it's pretty straightforward because we're not proposing any roads or anything like that. Um, the, um, conveniently, timely, again, if anybody drives along that run through there, the county, it's always been drainage issues along there, it's very flat. So the drainage, uh, county came through, popped in a bunch of catch basins and some, some piping and so forth, and it discharges into a, uh. The water out there, or the soil out there is pretty pervious, we've actually done soil testing out there and so forth, so it's really good run of bank. So it kinda dumps right into the ground there, kind of along Hopefull Skil Plains area. Um, let me switch to the next slide so I can give you a little more detail on, uh.
Okay.
Like a little pond back there?
You know, there's, there is.
There's a little.
Right, yeah, I see it.
Oh, so that's why the line kicks a little bit, I, we, we weren't sure why it was kicking.
Right, it's not really part of, it's, it's part of the ditch, but it's.
Okay.
It must have been years ago, it looks like there was some excavation and somebody hogged it out, and I mean, you know, fifty years ago type thing. So, it's, it exists, we're staying away from it for the most part. And actually, the property line, as it, as it's shown. I don't think there's any established easements now, we didn't show, none showed up on the survey, um, so as part of this, you know, progression, whether it's the town or the county, there may be a, a transfer relative to an easement and so forth. We still have to work out the details on the drainage itself, we are into a stormwater pollution prevention plan and so forth, so we're gonna have to look at that, but. Um, the county, um, we have had dialogue with the county, Department of Public Works, and the layout that you see is actually a function of speaking to them. What happens is, is you notice across the street, there's just driveways peppered all along, um, you know, Hillside Lake Road. What we're trying to do here, and the town does allow it, there's certain provisions relative to shared driveways, okay, they have to be a certain width, they have to be sixteen feet, not twelve. The acreages of the properties have to be, I think, at least an acre and a half, um, things along that line. So what we've done is we've tried to lay this out to be in conformance of that, and basically what it does, it limits those access points out on Hillside Lake Road. So what we're looking at is actually two access points.
Here, here, again, each of them serving three lots, which is the maximum permitted relative to shared driveways, okay?
And, uh, again, we've had some dialogue with the county, what happens when we did the original survey on the property, the drainage wasn't in. So what they had asked was, um, get the drain, now that the drainage is in, get the information on the print, just so we have it. Get it up to them, which we've done, and, uh, they would issue a conceptual approval, but again, we need to make some progress with this board before we get real wacky with locking in a layout. Um, in accordance. Just quickly, in accordance with the, the town requirements relative to subdivisions over five lots, we provided a couple of alternatives, layouts. Those alternatives really aren't too different than what you see, other than the fact that one shows individual driveways, which again, it's kind of a push from the county to try and keep those, you know, keep those, uh, centered on, on shared. And then, um, again, I think there was a modification maybe of a couple of house locations and so forth, but anyway, this is, this is our preferred layout as it, as it, as it is.
So the driveway, the one driveway comes across from Brandy?
Yeah, we go line that through.
Any other ones across from a driveway?
What kind of, uh, easements would go in place for those? I mean, kind of a, a maintenance easement or just kind of a shared access type of thing?
Well, I, I think that's part of it, there would have to be a shared access easement, um, as part of this, again, regards to the stormwater, there's gonna have to be certain requirements relative to where the drainage ends up and, and, you know, we're gonna do a lot of obviously individual onsite. But, I, you know, I don't think it's anything, um, that the board hasn't particularly dealt with before, you know.
How long's the longest driveway? Looks like this bottom lot right here.
I think there's also a maximum requirement or a maximum allowable on a shared driveway, and I wanna say it's thousand feet or fifteen hundred, something along those lines, but I mean, we're well certainly below that, you know? And the property's kinda strange the way it's laid up, cause it's triangular, so we have. Not that we wanna start imposing conservation easements along the front of the property, but, you know, we, we've set those houses specifically back to try and provide a little bit of a buffer.
Yeah, it, it is a little bit of an awkward layout though, because you, normally, we wanna have the houses of fairly equal distance from the road where possible, so that the, the houses aren't kind of aligned where the backyards don't line up. And the way it's laid out right now, it's, it's sort of at a diagonal to the road instead of in a more horizontal, parallel row.
Yeah, again, I think that's a function of the prob, you know, obviously, the, the piece of property itself, the master, you know, the overall parcel layout
size and configuration. Um, I, I, I think the, hopefully, the way this is laid out, the septic areas again are gonna be fairly small, we're not talking about huge fill sections and so forth. I, I think you can, we're trying to minimize the disturbance, and again, trying to keep that buffer, trying to push the houses off the edge. Um, in front, I, I don't necessarily, I mean, in the winter, you're gonna see homes, it's just when the trees, the leaves are off the trees, but, uh, I think this at least provide an opportunity to provide, again, some of that buffer in the front.
Are there wells or is it town water?
Wells.
Wells, yeah.
We're not, we're not in the water district.
Where does the DOT stand with this? I mean, is it, have they looked and said, we, we really wanna, want the two, not the five? I mean, have they really issued something formal or is it just?
That, based upon, this is a function of the discussion, they've been onsite, they've visited the site. Again, my last discussion was based upon the plan, it was, you know, the alternative plans that we have, this is what their preference is. Now, that's not to say that I can't go out and fight. The other thing is, is my client would probably prefer to have individual driveways, it's a lot easier, it's a lot cleaner, in terms of sales, in terms of future maintenance, in terms of Larry, Joe and Mo all being on the same page when it comes to plowing the front, you know, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, ideally, if you could have maybe one more curb cut, you could have just a shared driveway between two parcels instead of three. I think a couple of those are three, right?
All these are, this is two curb cuts, three driveways.
Right, so I, if you could have three curb cuts and two each, then you could actually almost do only a shared apron, right? And there'd be less of a, of a need for an actual shared driveway.
Um, I think, that, I, I know what you mean by trying to come in and, and pick it out. I think that may work relative to lots one, two and three. When you get down to the end here because of the flag lot, and there are flag lot requirements, again, relative to the town, we, we provide all environmentally sensitive lands information on there and our flag lot requirements is over with, it's gonna be harder on that because of the depth on it. What we're doing is we're providing that long shared driveway to get to that rear lot, that home on that rear lot, and then just peeling off, peeling off each side. So that was the thought around it, you know?
Well, you have just one shared driveway then.
Well, you know, it's a pleasure of the board, I'll, I'll, I'll make an argument if, if, uh, if you feel that that's the way to go, you know?
I mean, to me, if you could do one additional curb cut, that way you don't have, you know, for the house, the second one in, um, from the short end, the small end of the property, the second one, and he, he's actually got three driveways sort of right in the middle of their front yard. Peeling off, it just seems like if you could shift those overs, put it closer to the lot line for, between the smallest parcel, or the, the wedge shaped parcel and the next one over, and then have the two in the middle share a driveway, that seems like it would work better. And it doesn't disturb your flag lot, shared drive with the second parcel in front of it. If you could do a third curb cut instead of just, just two.
Although that does stagger the driveway, it's a little more with the other side, but.
Well, you might have to play with the lines a little bit, but I would, I think you could still keep them lined up, hopefully with the driveways across the street.
Is it a fight you can win?
Well, it's not, I said, argument, I can argue.
It's an argument you can win?
Well, they, listen, the rule is try to minimize curb cuts, you know, I mean, it's, it's a heavily traveled road at this point, you know, there's a lot of curb cuts on the other side.
Homeowner to enter into an agreement with their neighbor about plowing and everything, when you could make a couple of adjustments here and you wouldn't have to worry about that, right?
And I understand that, but they don't particularly look at it that way if there's the ability to provide for this kind of a layout, that's, that's all I'm saying. Like I said, if, less is more when it comes to the layout, my client dealing with selling down the road, I, I'm sure that in terms of potential sales, it's easier for them to sell a lot that has two people on it than has three on it, I get that, but, but again, what's.
Or only a shared apron and then there's no agreement, they all have their own driveway.
Well, the only thing is, is that there's not a whole lot of right of way here, so what happens, I'm with a shared apron and, and I literally would have to pull off.
Over each other, but I, I can't do ninety degrees turns, because then, then I got the F A B on my back.
Cause I can't get, I can't get an emergency vehicle in there, so.
Yeah, but if you don't, if you're not trying to fit three, if you're only trying to fit two, you've got a different, it's, it's not a ninety degree angle. Move, move it over closer to the lot line and you're just gonna peel it off, the, the dri, the two driveways will run on each, each lot.
So essentially, we have shared, right?
Yeah.
Or, or come in each side.
Right.
Right? Same thing here, just come these up here.
Right. And again, it may, it may shift your lot lines just a little bit to keep them as much as possible aligned with another driveway or aligned with Brandy, but I think, I think it might be more aesthetic to the homeowners.
That's just fine, is the board, is, I, I, like I said, I'll go knock on the door, is the board feel that way as a whole, then I'll, then I'll, I'll make that inquiry.
See both sides of the argument, I think.
Yeah, it's worth another conversation with the county.
Uh, Dave, do you have a, have you looked at this one?
Is that in any of your alternatives?
I don't have it with me, um.
But I mean, what Lori was talking about, was any, is either of those the alternative?
I think there was an alternative either where they were all their own driveways or there was one where it was more curb cuts, yeah. You don't have any site distance issues here, right?
No, this is a straight shot.
Okay.
Both directions, yeah. So I don't have that, I don't have that, that alternative layout sheet with me, but actually, as part of the submittal on the disc that we submitted. Um, and Pam has a full set, uh, she's bringing it up, so at least we have something to, to look at.
Yep. And, I'm sorry, I, we, I lost track of, the four acre parcel, is that gonna be consolidated with the Sibelico's property? Or are you just gonna have it as a separate lot that they, that you transfer to them?
To consolidate that with the balance of the property.
So are they part of your application?
They are listed on all of the notations and they're part of the, yeah, I mean, their signature is required to be on the plan, they are part of this application, yes.
Okay.
Was that the question?
So, Michelle, do we have to show the actual final parcel layout for Sibelico's? Cause I don't think we have the full Sibelico parcel showing here, right?
That was a comment in my, um, they, we have to see it, yeah, because they're part of the application and they have to be added to the application as well.
Oh. Well, I, I could do it, but I, I mean, we have the survey information, we can take it on there just so there's a record of it. Um, it's just, yeah, I didn't think we'd have to go wacky with the Sibelico property.
But you're, it, it would be different if you were creating a separate lot and that was being transferred to them. to them as its own lot, but you're not. You're trying to consolidate it with their existing lot. So, their existing lot needs to be on the plan, right, to show the before and after.
Isn't it being merged? It's being merged into the adjoining lot?
That's what I'm saying, like, I don't, I don't think it's showing that way here.
So, it doesn't have to, he can show it this way and then there'll be a deed that will encompass the merger and that will take care of it on land tax.
Right, that was, that was the thought, that I wouldn't have to actually do that whole site.
So, then if they ever want to use that separately, they have to subdivide it off the other lot in the future.
If they wanna do something with that lot, they would have to subdivide it from the Sabelico lot, yes.
Correct, because once it's merged, it's all one lot, yeah.
How are we approving it without showing what the merged lot looks like on the plan that we're approving?
Because this is gonna show that that piece is to be merged with the adjoining parcel.
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be its own lot. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a complete.
No, it's gonna be merged in with the adjoining piece.
So.
Otherwise, you would have to do a subdivision map that included that whole other parcel and that's not how you do it usually.
That's what I'm asking.
At least the piece being subdivided, so that piece then gets merged in by virtue of a deed that would include a description of the entire holding that's now merged as one. It's a very similar process they use via lot line adjustments.
So, so, this is a single parcel right now?
This is, yes.
It's being cut into seven pieces?
Correct.
But there will only be six lots?
Correct.
And we're not showing the six lot?
The seventh piece will be shown on this file map with the notation that has been merged to the parcel on whatever that lot.
Because they're just gonna be doing it by deed.
Wild map, yes.
Okay, we've not done that in the past. We've required that the full lot be shown on the plan.
Then Sabel, do they have to be on the application?
No, this.
No, I meant that their, their name, like on the actual application for the subdivision.
I think there has to be some consent shown on the form that they're gonna accept the conveyance of the lot. Isn't it the same parties or different entities? Okay, so then Sabel goes, this has to acknowledge that they're gonna have this lot merged in with their holding.
Would be a note on the map, right?
On this map, but then there has to be a deed to conveyance, yeah.
And, and I understand what you're saying and that's the reason why I could divide it.
It's a, there's other implications to doing that, right? There's tax implications and other things. I just wanna make sure everybody's very clear what's happening.
Right, but I took the same approach as Tom was mentioning, is that in terms of it being, again, a merger, and then I provided this cover sheet to kind of make sure that the one thing that makes it a little tougher is that Sabelico, here's, here's the triangle, right?
Mike, I'm just gonna, it's hard for us to hear you, I'm sorry. I don't know if we have a traveling mic, but.
So, anyway, there's a triangle and then the property that abuts Sabelico, believe it or not, is three separate tax parcels. They're owned by Sabelico, Raymond Sabelico, the wife. So, to do all of that would be a little, you know, you can do it, but it's just, it's not just a clean, Sabelico is made up of numerous parcels.
So, your four acre parcel is consolidating into how many of Sabelico's parcels?
Well, it would have to consolidate into one. It would have to be one and we would be the one of our choosing.
So, there's one existing parcel that will now have four additional acres.
Okay, that's better. Yeah, so what happens is here's the triangle and then we have parcel B, parcel C, and then parcel D. There's three separate tax parcels that make up Sabelico altogether. So, we will have to make a choice as to which one of these four, as to why they haven't been consolidated and they haven't done that. That's not a question I can answer tonight. But we would have to consolidate with the front parcel, the middle or the rear parcel in order for that to make it, make it happen and it'd have to be very clear, you know.
Is there any chance you're gonna need to split it into three?
Split what in three?
Your four acre parcel so that each par, each of the three existing parcels gets a piece of your four acres? Or is, are you sure it's only gonna be one four acre parcel consolidated with one of those parcels?
I am fairly confident that it'll be one parcel, but I'll have that answer for you by the next meeting.
Okay. I think we definitely, if we're not gonna show it on the map, Mike, we just need something that, in the file, that explains exactly where it's being consolidated.
Okay.
Tom, is there anything specific we need regarding that or just the, just the acknowledgement and the?
One of the conditions before the map would be filed is that there would be an actual deed recorded with the Dutchess County clerk to show the merger.
Well, we do need to know which of the parcels it's consolidating, okay, alright.
And you have to provide a description of that parcel.
If it's, if it, if it relaxes the way you feel about this, Lori, I can provide like an inset map as part of this and just detail it all and just show parcel, you know, it's just so it's like a tax map. Just to make it clear, you know, it's up to you, I, you know.
As long as we have the, the parcel ID and we understand what it's being annexed to, I'm fine with that. It just wasn't clear from what you have on the map currently. And then I think the only other thing with the drainage is we just need to clarify whether you're gonna create an easement there. You said none is coming up on the current maps, so.
Yeah, I don't, when, when we got the survey information, there's not an established easement along that drainage way and it's a pretty significant cut.
But it's clearly the drainage way.
It's, it's, yeah, so again, whether it becomes an issue, the county hasn't mentioned it to me, but if the town decides.
Well, the county, if they want it, they're gonna put it into your driveway permit. They're gonna say you have to convey an easement before they give you the driveway permit, so.
Right.
Just that they, they give you a work permit, right, I mean, it's, it's probably.
Well, did they not mention it to you because nobody brought it up? Or did you bring it up and they just didn't?
No, I, I just, it's, it's, it's not something that actually can't. We, we talked about the drainage that was installed along the length of Hillside Lake Road, but relative to, hey, by the way, we're dumping into a pre-existing drainage ditch and we don't have an easement, would you mind giving me one? I mean, like, fine, it doesn't care one way or the other, but I presume that either the county or the town or nobody, I don't care, would want an easement to there.
I think we would take an easement, I think.
You're gonna want someone to have that so that we have.
Yeah, because it has to be worked on.
We'll have to take a look, you'll have to talk to the county further and we'll take a look at it to see. It's something in the public interest, yeah, right?
Yeah, but I mean, that's, we'll, we'll do whatever.
Okay.
We're easy.
So, Tom, what's the best way that we resolve that? Do, does the applicant meet with the county? Does the town say they'll take it?
Well, I think when he meets, has further discussions with the county, maybe they would give us a letter indicating their preference and then if not, I'd take the town.
I believe it's the county's drainage that was.
Is it?
It would have to be their easement, right?
Is it coming from the other side? We gotta find that out.
It's there.
They don't want it, then we can take it as a town. Now, have to agree as well.
The county must feel they have some legal rights to dump the water in it.
Yeah, they connected a, you know, a bunch of pipes and they dumped it into the, which is, which is kind of the way it's been, but again, it was open channel rather than, you know.
But if you're gonna subdivide it now, we might as well make it clear what easement is being placed on the property and, right, so that it can be repaired if it needs to be.
I'm the one that brought it out.
Yeah.
So, I'm with you.
Okay. Dave, have you had a chance to look at the driveway layouts yet? Okay, and if we're meeting with the county to talk about driveway, if we can just include Dave in that conversation, that would be great because that way.
We're gonna typically defer to the county anyway though, right?
We would, we would in this instance.
Yeah, it's a county road, county county's gonna control it.
And their policy is to minimize driveways, but of course functionality, that's the way at some point. But if they say two, two or three.
Two, two or three cuts?
Yeah, two.
Well, right now, they're happy with two curb cuts serving three homes apiece. I have to discuss with them the possibility of three cuts with two homes apiece, which I will. Yeah, I, you know, they're not, you know, they're super rigid. I mean, I think there's a discussion to be had, you know, so.
At least have the conversation, that way.
Yeah, no, and we'll get a writing and all that good stuff, so.
Anything else from your perspective, Dave, that we wanna go over today? Michelle, anything else from your letter?
I need just confirmation that one of the lots, the shared driveway special permit requires that all the lots be one and a half acres. And one of them, it may just have been a typo, it's showing one point four four and it may be because you carried it from an alternative.
Oh, I got you.
Oh, that's right, yeah, one of the.
Lot four. Be the area requirements for the shared driveways.
Um, yeah, it, it does have to be one and a half and I will check that. We have a little wiggle room if we need that, but I, I'll, that has to be.
Anything else, Michelle?
No, I think you guys covered most of my comments.
Scott, anything?
No, I think in the past, anytime there was a shared driveway, I think we kind of had some provision as to who was responsible. Is it the first house constructed or just, you know, what happens if somebody takes out a building permit and then doesn't build and then somebody else comes along, takes out a building permit the next week and wants to get started and then at the end of the day, who's responsible for that apron, so. Unless they decide to put the aprons in up front. I know we'd have different scenarios.
And in, if, if they do go with the two curb cuts, I think installing the apron isn't enough because the one, one of them, it actually has to pull the drive to get to the other two lots, right?
Well, I think the, the illustration is you approved four lots on Route fifty-two right at the bottom of the hill and they have shared aprons. And I think the condition we put in there was whoever went first had to put in the entire apron because we didn't wanna get, you know, part aprons and things like that.
The apron is wider than a typical driveway, do I believe, yeah.
Right.
So, we may, you know, obviously look at some condition that whichever house goes first on that particular shared driveway or apron, that they have to construct.
You ran into trouble with the DOT because somebody put in half the apron.
Correct.
The second house got built, they went and paved it the full width. So, now it exceeded what DOT wanted and it came, became this thing. So, it should be constructed all at once, the.
Okay.
We're kinda learn as we try to improve things and help things, but then some issues come up that you don't envision.
Well, and I guess my point on this is that if you don't sell the house that actually has the apron on their own lot, then the two other lots have to be able to get in and pave enough to get their driveways built, right? So, it's not just the apron in this case, they're gonna have to pave across another lot. Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, is it sixteen feet with the shoulder or it's two feet on either side of that sixteen feet?
Two feet on either side is what the special, this shared permit asks for.
That's what I was just looking at, I just.
The exact language is.
Yeah.
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet with a two foot cleared shoulder on each side.
And the typical, I think, is twelve, so now you left with having to make it four foot wider. People wind up making it twelve foot wider. But the width of a paver, say eight foot even, which still exceeds what DOT wants. At least in the DOT route, I don't know about the county.
Any other questions for us tonight? I know this was just kind of first pass through.
Yeah, no, everything, I, we'll go back to the county. I, I got the input I needed. I just, I didn't get any comment letters. I don't know if anybody, I'll get yours, obviously. Did Morris do a check on this or did they, uh?
I don't know about Morris.
Well, they signed it. Just discussion, right?
Yeah, I mean, we paid, paid big, I figured we got something.
This isn't sketch, this is, I have an honest discussion, right?
Yeah, Steve and, uh. Right, okay. That's good, we're good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yankees lost, by the way. Yankees lost, by the way.
Can you sample one?
Aside from that, everything worked well.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, the next item on our agenda is this, is the sketch plans and the first one is Global Foundries U S two LLC at ten seventy Route fifty-two.
Okay, my name's Albert Spagnol. I'm a civil engineer for Global Foundries and I'm here to request an amendment to a previously approved site plan for vehicle access control, perimeter security and parking lot resurfacing. And the reason for the change is that competitive bids and value engineering, after we went through that process, the cost of the full project was more than two times the budget that we had to build it with. Excuse me. So, that being said, this one picture is all we need to explain it. It's a map of the entire Global Foundries campus. All the colored portions are approved in the site plan that exists now for this project. The changes are in red, excuse me, on the very bottom, the larger rectangle is a, is what we refer to as West Gate, West Drive. It was a new automatic gate system and traffic signal, but that has now been deferred or deleted from the project. So, we're gonna forego that part of the construction. The box on the left of the red was, is our gate one existing security control point. It, it has the same gates and such that were going to be included in the, in the West Drive new gate. What we're gonna do is keep that one in operation. We were gonna scuttle that one and build a new one, so what we simply did was decide not to build a bigger, better version, keep the existing one in operation. Those are the two changes.
As a functional gate or?
Yes.
I mean, will it be closed or, because?
No, it'll have the ability to be closed, you know, as it does now.
You know, I, I think that there are a lot of us who wanna see, you know, you, you get your plan approved as fast as possible so that the commercial uses at the I park can, can get underway as soon as possible. Are these gates in any way going to impede commercial uses down the road?
No.
No, but the only thing worth noting is that the gate at this current location is on the main road, whereas the gate they were going to construct was off the main road, which allowed the main road to, to stay open twenty-four seven, so. Even though it's an existing gate, it did accomplish it, something differently.
Right, it was explained to us that while there may be times when it's closed, any commercial use on the site would have access through call button or whatever to allow a vehicle into the site for those purposes, but that would be coordinated with the other uses on the site, so.
And would that be for consumers or just for deliveries?
For anything, anything onsite.
So, it's not a manned gate, it's a?
No, but there is, as you drive up, there's a kiosk and it has a camera in it, has a speaker in it and you, you can talk to the security person who's at a security desk inside one of the buildings. It's manned twenty-four seven. If you come up and just push the button and ask them, you know, where you're going or you, you, you need access, you explain who you are, it's, it's remotely manned twenty-four seven.
Okay, and is it, so is it open during the normal business hours of your commercial clients anyway? So, it would just be an after hours type of thing if somebody needed access?
Right.
Okay.
After hours are in extenuating circumstances?
Yeah, mostly, for that.
Yeah, somebody is late leaving and they have to get out. They'd be able to get out at any time.
Oh, right.
And then if someone had someone coming to pick them up or something like that, after hours, they would call and say, "I'm going to such, such a building."
And what constitutes after hours, just for?
I'm sorry, apologize.
What constitutes after hours?
I think they lock down now at eight P M. In, entering, as, as he, as he said, you can exit anytime. Any, any vehicle can exit any, in the exit direction anytime. But you need a badge to come in or speak to the security agent and then they'll let you in if it's alright.
You're going to sloop, you have to push the button and gain access, for instance.
Well, they let you in if you say, "I'm going to sloop."
Well, sloop typically would come in from, from Interstate eighty-five, gate, eighty-four, gate five to the right, the, the roads all the way to the right outside the green and there's.
Why do you say that though if you're coming from?
The times get adjusted for the I park.
Let's just have you come up towards the mic if you don't mind, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Bob Newhart with Global Foundries. The times get adjusted depending on what the I park tenants need to do. So, I think it's on, what, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. The gates are open till midnight, one o'clock and then they're shut. Typically, the rest of the week, they're shut around seven o'clock. But it's adjusted to accommodate our. But it's adjusted to accommodate our iPark client, though. Thank you.
Because just to assure you, there's agreements in place that, with the commercial development in the back, that they have the rights of access. So that would have to be respected, whatever the operation is. But that doesn't prohibit the temporary closure at various other times of the site.
Thank you, thank you.
That's important, an important point I forgot. We do coordinate with Sloop and iPark's tenants.
That's really kind of what I was looking for, thank you.
Are there any other changes, other than the retention of the old gate versus constructing the new one?
The box in the middle, the blue, is also approved. It's to create a parking, expand parking, a parking lot there. It used to be a building, Building 322, and it was demolished down to the concrete slab at grade. And presently, that area is being worked in by IBM and the New York State DEC. So, we haven't changed the plan to, to construct that. But we've just changed the timing such that it'll be next spring now, cause we can't start until they finish. So, next spring, we'll start that work.
Okay.
And then the area in the green was just, oh, I gotta write, well, the area in the green is no change. That's going on now.
So what is the path for approval of this revised plan?
What's that?
What is the, what is the path for approval?
Well, this, I believe is just gonna be recommended to be a minor modification by resolution.
I guess I'm asking, cause it's on for a site, for a sketch plan. I wasn't sure whether we could do anything with this tonight.
Oh, should I move it tonight if you deem it to be a minor modification?
As the sketch plan, we can do that?
Well, I mean, that's, it's on procedurally for step plan, but you have the right now, based on the discussion, to agree that it's a minor modification and handle it by resolution.
I'd agree with that.
I'd agree.
Did you say handle it by resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Or by motion?
Motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's why I wasn't sure where you were going with that.
You say motion, I say resolution.
Okay. All right. So, aside from the delay of the Building 322 converting to its intended parking use and the move of the gate, is there any other change that you're requesting tonight?
No.
Everything else remains the same?
Right, all the rest of it in the green is on schedule.
Okay, right. Any other questions or comments from board members?
So I have a question. So if someday Global Foundries isn't there any longer, the gate...
That's never gonna happen.
The gate, the gate, if approved, remains in perpetuity.
Correct, the way, well, it's there now, so it's there.
We want that in perpetuity, that gate at that location.
But this is still...
If a site law becomes commercial...
But it's still governed by the other agreements that are on record with respect to the subdivision of the site.
But who's gonna answer when somebody pushes that button?
Well, that's gonna be the obligation of the successor on, is the next successor. They run with the land, so. If not, then the...
Or they just...
Well, if not, the commercial uses in the back would have legal grounds to challenge the blocking of the road.
And that becomes more of a civil? That becomes a civil matter between the...
Yes, civil matter outside us, yeah.
So just to clarify, this is not a town road at this time?
At this time, it's not, no.
So...
It's a private road.
It's internal to this site, I mean...
So the access, who has rights over that road, are governed by the original agreements that were recorded when you did the original subdivision. And that's a very extensive agreement, and there's different levels up to and including the possible dedications at that road.
Right, but my only point is, at this point in time, the management of that gate and any mechanics that go with it, any monitoring that goes with it, is not the purview of the town.
Up to town, right.
It is the purview of the applicant, cause it's internal to their site.
Right.
It's a change to their site plan, not to remove it, but lesser until that road's being dedicated, it's...
It's fine with us.
I don't see why we would have issue with it.
Right.
I'm looking at you, Scott, in case I'm missing something about that.
Well, it's just access to the remaining lots in the back. And who's gonna make sure that the gate's operational?
I think the town engineer's problem, the question is, what happens if Global is gone and the next operator or owner comes in and doesn't cooperate with the opening and closing of the site? Well, that then becomes a civil issue between the owners of the lots in the rear and the new owner, based on the previously recorded agreements that were approved as part of the original subdivision.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that, if members of the board are comfortable with that. At this point in time, I don't see that these are significant changes from our perspective.
A move that we...
So I just wanna, and I'm sorry, I'm just gonna ask one last, so normally, we require something to be in front of us as an application before we would take a motion on any change to the site plan. So we're comfortable, Tom, this is in scheduling?
Why, I mean, it's just, it's a previously approved site plan, it's not yet built. And this, if you deem it to be a minor modification of that, you do it by resolution and amends it, so.
By motion.
By motion.
By motion.
My motion.
Your resolution, my motion, is that right?
So I would move that we deem this a minor site modification to the previously approved plan.
Second.
So, all in favor of accepting this as a minor site plan modification?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, do I have a motion to actually approve the changes being requested for the move of the gate? And the delay in the installation of the replacement for the 322 lot, parking lot?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question, does that mean you're looking for a CED to get the building permit?
Yes, yes. Unless you disagree, we could add another condition or two.
Usually when you get your approval, you start running.
Do you prefer a public hearing, or?
We can accommodate.
The next item on our agenda is also a sketch plan for East Fishkill provisions at 567 Old Hopewell Road.
Good evening, Mark Day, Dan Stokosa. I'm here this evening to further along the application for these Fishkill provisions. What you have in front of you tonight is we had a survey done. We've also shown the parking on this plan. We've shown land bank parking as well, along the rear of the property. What we're showing now is the, you know, basically the improvements that are being proposed on, on a, the survey. What, what basically is happening, there's an existing pavilion that will be enclosed. There's a proposed pavilion in the rear, not right now being part of it, but would like to get the approval. And then there's the expansion of the kitchen, which we talked about at the last meeting.
Okay. And, Mark, did we, or maybe this is a question for Michelle, did we get clarification on the parking? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
She's busy.
Maybe you ducked out, where'd she go?
I've asked for clarification on the parking specifically.
Just gonna have you come back to the mic, I'm sorry, Michelle.
Requested clarification on the parking. I've been told that it is actually a net loss in seats, but I don't have the exact numbers yet.
Okay.
We now have that information on...
On the plan, okay.
Yeah, we did put it on.
And what is it, Mark, just...
Basically, it's what we've, we've got spaces required are forty-six, based on, let's say, the occupant loaded building. And forty-six are provided, and we have fifty-two land bank in the rear of the building.
So you're still retaining the land bank? We're not gonna build any of them out at this point?
Yeah, no, we're...
But those are used for the car shows, cause there's a concern about the car shows.
Correct.
So there's really more than ample parking for the car shows.
Yeah, there's quite an area, as you can see, which is unused.
But you're using the grassed area for the car shows? Not, we're not, you're not proposing building out the land bank part?
Nope, staying the same.
Which is fine, I'm just... Okay.
So this was all shown on a previously approved site plan?
Yes, I think there are variations. I mean, there was, the building was different shape, but it's the same area, if you will.
I thought the kitchen extension was slightly smaller than the previous, so...
Yeah, and I think, I think the pavilion was shown differently, but I'm not sure why. But this is actually a survey, so.
Yeah, your outdoor seating, your pavilion area, and the size of the kitchen are all different from your original plan.
Correct.
And I wanna say maybe the location of one of the outdoor freezers.
Yes, well, I think, I think they were shown on the other plans here. It's still in the same spot.
Okay. And you're doing a, did we work out, Michelle, I know there was a small encroachment for the awning or the pathway to the generator?
So, yes, the pathway to the generator is, is, I believe it was only like a half-foot encroachment, or maybe that was the side of the building.
But just to clarify, it's less than a foot? So that's why this doesn't require a zoning board referral?
So it's twenty-four feet and, you know, twenty-four point six inches or something like that. And so therefore, since it's less than a foot, the zoning board typically considers that negligible and does not require a variance, according to practice.
Okay.
I mean, but that really came into play, I mean, there were a couple of other permits that were granted that, where that came into play, right?
The couple other permits, it was, we're talking about the new addition they're putting on the building is within a half, a half a foot of being, so it's only twenty-four and a half feet. But the container was, needed a variance.
Right.
Yeah, so I think the canopy is within that, the boundary of that...
And we were concerned, I think the first discussion we had, we were concerned about how far out that awning and canopy would go. And it turns out that it's, it's pretty much right, exactly, at twenty-five feet, basically.
So, Mark, you're here on your second sketch plan discussion, so this'll turn into an application with your...
If the board would like, I mean, at the last meeting, we were hoping to at least start some of the construction. Does anybody remember that?
Yeah.
Yes. The understanding would just be that it's at the applicant's...
Risk.
Risk.
Okay.
If you do that.
Yeah.
I think we're comfortable with what you're proposing and the location of it, but you haven't been through the public hearing yet. You haven't been through the formal final site plan process.
Right, I think tonight, we, the plan we had...
Survey, it's easier for us to have comfort with that.
Right, to visualize what's going on with it. The, you know, as you can see, it's a sizable site.
Did you go to the ARB?
We have not gone as of yet.
I think the ARB, yeah.
Yeah, we did go to the ARB, a couple, I don't know if I have the 3D submitted with this. But we did go, a couple minor changes, very positive. But a couple things, like just material, in our best interest, we changed to vinyl instead of steel for our addition of the kitchen, just so that way you don't have to worry about rot. They were saying that sometimes the steel, you know, going down to the ground level on the sidewalks, tends to rot quicker than you would think. Other than that, color was kind of praised, cause it was all green. We also did kind of jump the gun, we reached out to some neighbors and just kind of show them kind of what we were looking to do, so that way it wasn't like we were trying to put a Walmart in their backyard. All positive, you know, kind of, they kind of threw their hands up. They, where they looked at it from their backyard, they really couldn't see the structure just cause the, the white pines we have back there. But everything seemed to go over great between the neighbors and everybody.
I mean, this is one of the signature businesses in town.
We're trying, you know, we're trying.
And I think what they're bringing forward here is largely in line with what was previously approved. I know it's expired, but it would also give us some comfort that there shouldn't be.
This is almost tantamount to seeking reapproval of an expired approval and modify it.
Yeah, the amendment being the...
Might as small amendment to it.
Yeah.
Ever so slightly.
Teeny, we were looking with the, kind of the enclosure was a permitting of itself. And then really, the big amendment, the teeny amendment, was more so the relocation, the outdoor seating would be off the back, which was the north side, kind of invisible from the road, unless you were looking, you know, off of eighty-two quite a ways, you know, over the power lines, you can kind of see the side poking out.
Right, but I mean...
But as far as your residential neighbors, you're not removing any trees to do this construction? All the screening remains in place, there's no significant change that...
Yeah, the only thing we'd do was, you know, we would just make the fence connect, so that way it's just a solid. We did like it open, cause we do, as far as with our neighbor, we kind of go back there. We maintain, clean up the leaves in between our properties and, you know, just make sure the white pines are not, you know, reaching over the fence, we do maintain back there. But yeah, our closest neighbor, Gary, he's, I guess that would be to the west of us. He looked over some of the architectural drawings, you know. I didn't show him any of the elevations or anything like that, but I did show him the side angle view, what he would be able to see, how it looks, you know, above the storage container. And, you know, when we stepped back, you really couldn't even see that high, cause of the trees. But all that's saying the same.
Right, I mean, I think that it's, it's good news that what's driving this is really kind of a change in the business with, you know, it's the mixture of retail, as well as sandwiches and catering that are kind of like just too confined an area. So, you know, the reduction in the seating and everything else, I think this is all, I mean, this is exactly what you want to see happening in businesses in your town.
Yeah, we're, we're losing seating, but we're, we're looking to make it a more efficient business, where it's not necessarily needed, where people get in and out. We've noticed that a lot of people kind of hit the road, and that seating outdoor kind of isn't used that, you know, much throughout the colder seasons and stuff like that, or inclement weather. So, being able to, you know, keep our interior seating is kind of a big thing for us.
And where you currently have your interior seating, that's turning, that's your sort of catering location?
Yeah, that's just gonna be a catering, you know, where the customers would interact with the employees to, you know, pick up or order their catering.
Okay. So, you, Mark, you are in application as of today? Okay, not on our agenda, but as of today, you did complete your application?
Submitted in escrow and everything.
Okay, so unless we have any, I don't anticipate any other significant changes here. I think we can set this for public hearing? Does anybody disagree?
No.
Sounds good.
I agree.
That you, you need to notice your neighbors, and our next meeting is on November, we have one on November 14th, but we would put you on our next formal meeting, November 19th, if you can get your mailings done in time.
We could, we could hand-deliver them if need be, but yeah, we could definitely.
Well, we gotta think of your registry.
Okay, yeah.
Sir, I can't hear what you're saying, Mark. Are you okay or not okay?
It's spring, cause we don't want you to hear.
Okay, that's fine. I just need a response, are you good with the November 19th public hearing date? Or are you of concern?
No, we wanna, yeah, we will be...
In the meantime, is there something specific that, and maybe, Scott, this is more the question to you, if the applicant wants to proceed with any of their work, it's at their own risk, because we won't have completed the public hearing process?
The only thing, my comment would be, if they wanted to work on the existing pavilion and winterize that, that portion of it, I mean, I think that in and of itself is really almost a minor change. I think that the board could act on right now. I think adding, expanding the footprint, I think that's, that's a different story. And we typically don't issue those type of permits until we have site plan approval. But if it helps them, that they want to get started with the existing pavilion, and the board maybe deems that it's just that portion of it a minor amendment, then they got the green light. Does that work for them?
Is that helpful to you?
Yeah, and I think we get started on helps us tremendously. One of the things was, yeah, we could definitely make the...
Even footings at their own risk?
I'm just saying, we haven't done it before.
Okay. So, the pavilion itself doesn't have any footprint changes, right, Mark? That's, it's just a matter of being able to enclose it?
They can winterize that right away.
I mean, you're not gonna use the outdoor seating till next spring, anyway, at this point, so.
No, we, no, we plan on, after our last event outdoors, to start construction on the pavilion. I mean, if we were able to break ground before, you know, I mean, after our hearing, that would be great for the footings. But I mean, we have, we have some plans to submit, anyway, so, I mean, it would all work out.
Okay. So, before we schedule you for public hearing, do I have a motion to allow a minor site plan amendment to enclose the existing pavilion as a four-season building?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that lets you proceed with that as, as a formal part of your plan now, just for that building, per Scott's agreement to that, since it's not changing the footprint. The rest of your plan, if you started anything, it's at your... The rest of your plan, if you started anything, it's at your risk, and it sounds like the building department wouldn't give you the permit for that at this point until we've gotten you through a public hearing, but at least it lets you start on something.
Sounds good, now is this going to be under one permit or two different permits you want us to file?
One would be a renovation alteration to the existing.
Okay, so just renovating? Okay.
But we could possibly later amend, later amend that when.
Okay.
Okay, and then do I have a motion to schedule the East Fishkill provisions public hearing for November nineteenth?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Mark, that means you've got a few days, but we've got to get the mailings done.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Bertocci amended site plan at five Bertocci Lane in Holmes. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Bertocci, excuse me.
Bertocci.
Apologize.
That looks like Saban.
Okay, so, there's another project behind us, so I just want you to focus on the inset here. This is Mr. Bertocci, he owns property up on fifty-two, up on the mountain, okay? He basically is a, you know, a contractor, heavy equipment and so forth. He owns the property as well as his residence is actually on the property behind it, okay? Right now, in terms of how he gets access, is through the private Bertocci Lane, okay? There are three homes plus his business that actually get served by Bertocci Lane, it's a private road, private drive, okay? So, in terms of use and so forth, he actually went to the zoning board a number of years ago, I submitted that as part of the application, he has a permitted use to park construction vehicles on site, so forth. The problem that he's running into is that he effectively, right now, uses Bertocci Lane as his main access for all his vehicles and so forth, heavy equipment. There is, there are kids that reside in one of the homes of which are also served by this, which wait out in the front for the bus, and in the morning, he's moving heavy equipment back and forth, it's just not an optimal type of setup. So what, what he'd like to do, which is what we detail here on the proposed conditions plan, is we're not proposing any specific modifications internally on the site, but he would like to put a new DOT entrance in to serve access to his commercial portion or his commercial portion of the site. And effectively, that's what this details, we've been on site with DOT, site distance is a non-issue, they have no problem with the entrance, but that's the easy part. We're up in DEP territory, okay, we have actually a DEC wetland that resides across the street, works its way under an existing culvert, and we actually have it outlined here, this is the extent of a DEC wetland, okay? So not only we are messing around with.
The roads in the middle of the wetland.
DEP, DOT, DEC, so there's a, there's a, you know, as simple as, and straightforward as this may seem on the onset, it's, it's complicated, okay? So, we've had our delineator out there, actually set the, the flagging relative to the, to the wetlands, they were out with DEC, I think that was on Thursday of last week, they're okay with the flagging as it is, that was step one to get that done. What we're here before the board for is obviously, this is a modification to a site plan, okay? One thing I forgot to mention is that with regards to Bertocci, as part of putting this entrance in, there's also a proposal, put a, like a fence to stop any vehicles from, any commercial vehicles from going onto Bertocci Lane, so that's actually part of what we show here as well.
Is that on the, on the commercial property though, just to prevent the?
Right, there's a.
Is it going to be like chain link fence or?
What's that?
Kind of fence.
Whatever you want, it's just, it's, it's to stop whatever, you know, make sure that, that, that.
Would you still allow emergency access, or it wouldn't be necessary?
I don't, I mean, the emergency access for.
I don't know, I mean.
Well, we would have a new DOT entrance to, to access the commercial portion of the site, and then this Bertocci Lane's not going away, it would serve access to the two homes plus Mr. Bertocci's home, so that, that access doesn't change to.
The only thing that affects is Bertocci's vehicles leaving the site.
Coming in and going.
Yeah.
Right. Right, that's effectively.
So it's not going to be, it's just, there's going to be a fence, not a gate, nothing like that?
No, permanent fence.
Isn't it just easier to build the new residential driveway and keep the, just bring down a, a private residential driveway? Off the existing road, like above where the commercial vehicles.
To the west, pretty close. If you look like that, if you. Well, the pop, the property line for Bertocci Lane runs for, you know, John's property.
No, it would have to be on the adjoining property.
So on this property?
Yeah, but he's trying to solve their problem, right?
So realign Bertocci Lane, is that what you're saying?
No, or just leave that for the commercial part and then come off with a residential to the west. Do you have any wetlands to the west of the existing driveway?
Um, the wet, the, the line of, the drainage comes down south, cuts across, and then with a thirty-six inch pipe, and then cuts back across and then down, so.
And Mr. DePac, Bertocci does not own that property, right?
No.
So.
But that was recently subdiv, subdivision approval was just recently granted to that adjoining property by you.
That was a COLI, that was a COLI application, not Bertocci application.
Right, I know.
But I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm asking.
And then this is by virtue of a use variance, I think, to use here, right?
Right.
And I don't know if there were limits in that or not.
I provided a copy of the resolution, it was issued by the ZBA as part of the application package, so I didn't see anything out there limiting.
I'm sorry, the road is in, isn't it?
Bertocci Lane is in.
Okay, so.
That's been there for a hundred years, or I don't know how long, but it's been there.
No, the only point is if they're looking to create a new curb cut, either one option is to create a new commercial curb cut, or another option is just to create a new curb cut for more of a residential nature for these homes.
Well, you have a driveway that's right there also.
I'm just asking if you explored it.
Oh, yeah.
The answer is no, I should, I have an aerial, which may be, because I don't know if we can make that fly.
Just keep in mind, isn't it a pre-existing, non-conforming?
Well, you got a use variance, so at some point, he convinced the zoning board that you could not use this property for any other purpose, but it's an old used variance from many years ago.
But he was also going to provide that continuous buffer along fifty-two. As part of that, he was had that continuous buffer.
And I think also the lots that were subdivided off the COLI lots are all pre-existing, non-conforming, they're all kind of odd.
It's a very messed up area.
It's a, it's a difficult area, but if they can fit another driveway in, I think that might be a solution.
Give me the address.
So, this would also change the viewscape, wouldn't it?
It's not a change of use, it's just, but what?
I mean, obviously.
Well, the proposal of the applicant would definitely change the view on fifty-two, right?
So, so my question, I mean, do you think this is ready for primetime, what's behind there, what's going to be unveiled, I mean, is that ready for primetime? Meaning.
Primetime?
If all of a sudden that building comes into view, I, I don't, again, when you drive down fifty-two.
That's what I'm thinking, if you went with it, if you.
Yeah, you're not, you, you're not seeing what's behind there, so I get his, I get the, that he wants to open that up.
Yes.
Is, is that ready for primetime, or are we all going to go, hey, that's nice? He'd been missing it all these years.
Yes, that's true, you don't hardly know what's there because it's part of that special, that, that variance.
So this may actually engender the need to do landscaping or some sort of front improvement?
I think the concern is, is once, there's a berm and there's a fence and there's pines and you don't, you don't even know really that he's there, at, you know, so what you're doing is you're effectively, for lack of another term, blowing a hole.
Right.
Right.
Right through the front.
What's that going to do?
Opening up an entrance, so, and I understand that, the fact is, is that, you know, yes, it's going to be, there's going to be some visibility there relative to his yard. You know, if we can do something to try and help that, and I certainly obviously amiable to that, listen, this is not a, an absolute end-all, have to have it type of thing. If, 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 if there's a concern, then we don't have to do it either, it was just, you know, he, he has some issues with kids being at the end of the Bertocci Lane.
And I didn't mean it as an antagonistic question, I'm just asking, is what behind there really ready to be shown?
It is a business zone.
Okay.
Just, it's not, believe it or not, it's not, that, that is a small little portion of business that exists up there, so it's not that it's completely a residential district, you know, so I guess that's in our favor.
Do you want to just, just walk us through the?
Yeah, can you see it?
Yep. We get the lights.
Cam, is there a light switch we could switch?
Alright.
Thank you.
So, the parcel on top, two, three, five, six, five, zero, is, has its own driveway, so that's not in play, you see that, right? So, John's piece is two, six, zero, six, one, zero, the butter, your butters, two, four, five, six, three, zero, and two, two, seven, six, two, seven, are all shared, share Bertocci Lane, okay? You can see where his yard comes into, his access is there to the yard, that's where the fence would be proposed, okay? Along the front there, there is a, you know, that's, there's a green path or a, a natural vegetative buffer, for lack of another term, that does exist there, so that, the access point is kind of proposed in the middle, he's got some trailers and things on there that would have to be shifted around and moved around, but. That's, that's the proposal, but those, those are the driveways, I thought there may be even another driveway, but, but two, four, five, six, three, zero, that's actually like a horseshoe driveway, so it has two access points on Bertocci.
Wow.
The one all the way at the top?
You would have to cross six, five, zero to put a driveway in.
Six, five, zero, six, five, zero.
The one that's all the way at the top?
All the way to the top.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you can see the limited amount of frontage there, we'd have to be talk, you know, no, we did not entertain that, I mean, we haven't had that discussion.
So, so Scott, based on this aerial, what, do you see a place where they could pull a separate residential drive off?
Is there somebody else in the block?
Seems tight.
Well, the only thing I see is the possibility of actually shifting the proposed one right adjacent to Bertocci Lane, and maybe narrowing Bertocci Lane a little bit, and then maybe putting some kind of divider or fence up right there and just have kind of a split, shared apron, but clearly delineated that one side of it's the residential and the other side's the commercial side. But at least that would help block, I think, the view shed inside by not putting it right in the middle of the lot.
So you take the existing curb cut and widen it and put a divider?
I would maybe neck down Bertocci Lane to something that's, you know, whatever, I'll let Dave comment on that, and then still have enough room there to build himself a new twenty-foot entrance right next to it.
It looks like your driveway is already encroaching on the.
What's to say he couldn't come in from the backside?
Well, that might be right away.
I don't know how accurate that is, I mean, not just.
Oh, really?
What's that, jump bridge?
What's to prevent him from coming in the backside?
To the east, you mean to the east?
Yeah. Yeah, come back around the ten, so, you know, you're not cutting in through the middle of property, or the middle of the business.
I'm, I'm mentioning you.
Like where the fifty-two ID is on the road, say a little fifty-two.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, on the, on the right side.
Yeah.
Effectively.
Yeah, closer into the wet, southeast.
Yeah, the wetlands will get a little wider there, at least in terms of map, in terms of radiation. So, and, and, you know, I know it jumps, I know it jumps up pretty good there in the wooded area, otherwise, I mean, he'd probably be using it if it wasn't wet and, and steep, you know?
But this driveway is the least disturbance of anything we've talked about, guys.
What driveway?
What's in front of us, this small driveway is the least disturbance.
I mean, we could try and also put in a, you know, in, in a gate with, you know, covered flats, I mean, eight foot tall, I mean, to try and provide again some shielding relative to what's in there, you know?
Where would the fence go? Because that would be kind of.
It's off the entrance to.
Right.
Cross the entrance.
So it would go out right in the middle of twenty-four, five, six, three, zero, right?
Yeah, kind of, yeah, you see where the entry to his yard is onto Bertocci there, right in that spot, I mean.
Right on that line.
To go, we could go so far as to actually rip out the pavement and put grass down, I mean, that's, the, the intent is not to take out, you know, not to take trucks out Bertocci.
Is, is this connected with, it seems to me that it's more heavily used lately, that there's been more materials being stored, I don't know if they've changed their operation, that that's why they need the gate too, or?
I, you know, I can't address that, Tom, I don't know, John would have liked.
It just seems that there's more material there because it's become a little more visible by the activity going on.
John would have liked to have been here tonight, but he's actually, I think, in Montauk on an anniversary date, so, he's the one that could answer that, and I don't know, again, as part of the special permit in terms of restrictions, that was done at a time when, let's just say, the resolutions drafted by the zoning board were loosely worded, for lack of another term.
I call it the Wild West time.
I call them the good old days.
Okay, let's go to. Where is the bus stop, the designated bus stop for kids?
That's, that's the thing, and it's.
Every driveway.
But whereabouts? Every driveway.
Right.
About.
The bus is actually coming off Route fifty-two and coming onto Bertocci Lane, or is it stopping on Route fifty-two?
Kids come down, Bertocci Lane's a private road, so the school bus won't go up the road.
Just asking where the bus stops.
I, I can officially get something official from, that's Carmel School District, but they stand at the end of Bertocci Lane, that's where the kids come down, at fifty-two.
So is there, is there another way that they can?
For the commercial activity?
Can safely.
Well, I think Scott's just saying is to.
I mean, he's not a, he's not a big time contractor, so I mean, I just don't, he's probably.
Why don't you split it, then the kids would be on one side.
Maximum five trucks in the morning, something along that line, coming in and out, I mean, leaving and coming back.
But I can attest, driving there every day.
He's just a couple man operation.
That there's about thirty-seven stops for kids, they come to the driveways and stop, and then drive, they don't even have to walk from one driveway to the other, every driveway.
Well, I was just, I was going to say though, if there was some sort of specific enclosure or something like that, or if there was, because I know some of these, now they have the little shelter, rain shelters or whatever, if the kids are walking.
I don't know how DOT would feel about that.
You know, having something like that there, I don't know, would help the situation relative to big trucks coming in and out.
It's the walking on the road, as much as anything.
But let's face it, the five-hundred-pound gorilla in this room is the DOT, what DOT is going to sign off on and the EP.
Well.
I thought the wetlands.
Yeah.
It's DEP, I think it's more DEP.
I think if you slide the driveway, you may eliminate the wetlands issue, which.
Yeah. You're saying slide, but you mean widen the existing, so it has a commercial side and a residential side.
Then you're going to have a problem with DOT.
Having those, having those access points that close together.
Because they don't want them encroaching on each other, especially a commercial and residential.
Is it what you have already?
But that's what they have right now, Dave, that would, that would alleviate that issue though, right?
They actually have a common driveway.
But what he's saying, what he's saying is where the driveway is, if you move the proposed driveway location closer to Bertocci, Bertocci Lane.
Right.
You're going to have to revisit DOT.
Yes.
And my experience is that they're reluctant to have two driveways, you know, on top of each other.
I agree with you, I, you know, we didn't even, I didn't even, in terms of having those that close to each other, it gets crazy with the turning movements, and that's a fifty-five mile an hour shot right there, I, I don't know if that's got a chance, I'll ask the question, just like with the county, but I don't know if that's going to go much anywhere. You know, as mentioned, it's not, DOT is, is, this is, they're the easy ones, it's going to be DEC and it's going to be DEP, we don't really have room for mitigation based upon the, the, the amount of disturbance we're doing, so we, you know, again, I'm letting my, letting our consultant handle that end of it. But that's, those are the ones that we're going to have to push through on this, I probably won't be back here anytime within the next month or so because we need to work through those issues, and I need to come back with, to you with something that, that says, hey, we're moving forward with those agencies, otherwise you'll never see me again, you know?
But you're comfortable with both options, Mike? The one you proposed, or potentially widening your existing drive to have a commercial side and a residential side? Or shifting the commercial?
I just don't know what, also, where the existing Bertocci Lane is, I think it's, again, it's a road that's been there forever, I don't know what have rights we have relative to making improvements to that or so forth, our frontage, as you can see, that the frontage of six, three, zero, there's a little sliver there, and again, assuming this is not absolutely correct, it might be more detailed on the plan, okay? So Bertocci does kind of hit, you're right on our property line, so, you know, we'll have to check and see what is permitted there, we're still nicking, you know, some of the wetlands there, so that issue doesn't go all the way altogether, you know? But I, I think, I'm in agreement that, Dave, I don't think the DOT is going to be real enthusiastic about two entrances being right next to each other like that, you know?
Okay. Do you have other questions for us?
I don't, we haven't made a formal application, this was just for shooting it around, so.
I think this is your first sketch discussion in front of us, you can do one more before you need to be in application.
Like I said, I want to make sure that we're advancing on the other avenues before we come back again, so.
Dave or Michelle, Scott, any final comments?
Okay, thank you.
I have one. Is there any thought that opening this up would help business? Is that part of this motivating factor? Or is it really more just progress and egress?
Talking sidebar and, and this, John's not a big operation, you know? He does septic, he puts in a couple houses here and there. He's not a, not a large-scale contractor and he's not looking to take it to that particular level. Again, what's been portrayed to me and, and what he's always said, and if you know John, I wish he was here. He's actually a pretty likable guy and he's honest. It's an issue with those kids.
Go ahead.
So I don't think it's increasing the value. It's probably, you know, he's been operating there, he's got his variance, he's been kind of quiet doing his thing over there and, you know, but he's left them alone, so, you know, it becomes too much of a, you know, hassle with the other agencies too. It's, if it's a no, it's a no, you know?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the sketch plan review for Blue Hill Commons at twenty-four, fifty-four, Route fifty-two.
I'm just for this one too. I'm gonna put up the aerial. It seems to kind of help.
Great.
Okay, Blue Hill Commons. Now, this, this aerial, when you get on parcel access, it only lets you click one parcel. But this is actually two parcels, which is the parcel that's highlighted there and then the one behind it, say. So there are two separate tax parcels as they exist and the idea of that was actually to, to combine them. This is at the intersection. You have Blue Hill Road on the left-hand side. This has frontage on fifty-two. Old State Road is to the left and then three seventy-six, the police station is, is on the right-hand side with Highway Department kind of behind us. This application was actually made back in early two thousand. It's, it's a little bit of a challenging site largely because of all the action that goes on in the area and the roadway and the integrated traffic network and things such as that. We have a lot of access points and we have a limited amount of frontage. What happens is, once you get into the site, then it, then it opens up, okay? So, we're going through our previous records and pulling information together relative to the discussions that we had with DOT and obviously two thousand was not what it is today. Things are different. But we wanted to get in front of the board again, just to present effectively what we're thinking about. This is in a B-one zone. It's, in terms of acreage, sorry, it's six and a half acres altogether. Again, limited frontage on Route fifty-two. Which proposes actually a road to come in and effectively an internal road network, okay? Private road network that would be serving a host of different retail facilities, restaurant facilities, things such as that. We had done a significant amount of work on this back in, back in the day. But again, I think largely because of economy, it kind of just fell flat. There was a lot, again, got going on here. I don't necessarily think that it was an issue that DOT said, we're not gonna allow an access. That's, that's not it. But there's gonna have to be some work here to make sure that what we're proposing and impact and so forth is, 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 is not gonna be what it, I'll say what it, what it may appear to be. It's a different applicant this time. And again, it's, 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 it's a bit of a challenging site. We, one of the things that I know that was discussed or has been discussed is the issue of parking. There's a lot, again, on our site, there's a lot going on here relative to the buildings and access and so forth. The idea would be to, to phase this, but in terms of our parking, we're gonna get a little clearer on exactly what our uses are, what our hours of operation are going to be. So that way, in terms of parking, complementing days when actually things are very busy during the day, maybe they offset restaurant uses at night, things such as that. But again, it's, you know, it's, 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 it's a significantly large parcel in an area that, that, again, once was proposed for development that never, never, never came to fruition. So, it's our first one. What are your comments?
First question, it never occurred to me before. Are, are some of the police cars actually parked on this lot?
Again, I don't believe that's wholly accurate. This is an overlay with partial access, so it's kind of a plus or minus thing. But I don't, that doesn't, that ever showed up. Actually, the survey that we have here details this being along the property line. So I think we should, we're fine, yeah.
So, Mike, it looks like there's a parcel between this property and Blue Hill, right?
There is.
There's a house on the corner.
Okay. Is there any, any part of that parcel that could potentially be an alternate access here?
We, um-
You know, it would involve another parcel that you don't own right now, but just from a practical standpoint, that Route fifty-two, left-hand turn action is probably gonna be really tough. And left-hand in would be really tough.
Yeah. You know, we had some, there were some discussions with the previous application with the owner of that property. I believe they're the same owners. We haven't had any, you know, recent discussions with them, but we will, I think it's worth of having something from them. You know, it's, it's, it's valuable in the fact that it increases the value and increases the ability for this property relative to exposure, getting away from access points and other things we would have to look at. But again, there has to be a sense of reason when it comes down to numbers. Necessarily, that wasn't the issue the first time that we spoke to them, you know?
I, I wasn't sure if there was like slopes or something preventing, preventing it or whether it was just a, obviously, it's not a parcel, it's part of this, this land right now, so I get it.
I don't necessarily wanna go on record, but I think there was some discussion that the previous use of that going way back and, you know, there's no old timers around in the room tonight, but that there may have been a station there at one point, a filling station. I, you know, I'm not exactly sure, but there was talk of that. But let's, let's do a little research on it and see if that option exists at all, you know?
I think what, what stands out most is trying to understand the parking and the use. So, you said a couple of restaurants, you said some retail. It's not clear yet to me what the, what the total parking requirement would be, but I think what's currently proposed is missing, was it sixty spaces or? Michelle, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you as I'm saying that. I remember it was short spaces, I did, in a lot of spaces.
Yeah, based on what they're proposing as part of the, the number of uses and the square footage that they're proposing on the sketch plan right now, it's short about sixty spaces. It would, the site would require about two hundred and fifty-nine and they're providing a hundred and ninety-nine.
Yeah, so I, I think that's on us to, to provide a better narrative and description relative to what the proposed uses are and so forth.
Okay.
Gives you a better level of comfort, so we'll, we'll work on that.
Had you gone to the health department with this? I mean, had you done onsite, you know, deep tests and perks to support the septic?
We have not, but we, we did soil tests back when.
I'm saying, back when? Did you vet it out with the health department or did you do enough?
I don't believe an application ever got to far to make a formal application.
Did you do enough onsite investigation to make you think that you could get onsite septic approved by the health department?
We did. We probably performed fifteen to twenty soil test, deep test pits on the site and so forth, so-
At the time, you felt you could get it approved?
Right. It's selective in terms of the areas, because there's, as you go in. The reason, the reason that we have this actually loop road here is you come in and you're pretty much agreed, but there's a fairly significant slope that runs, that runs along here, it pops up. So we're actually kind of working our way around that perimeter. And the soil tests that were done were kind of in the lower areas, okay? There's a stream that actually runs in the back. So, you know, we were pretty successful relative to soil tests in this area, not so much on top. So, yeah, that's, that's, I guess, since you brought up, you know, the health department issue, one of the things that are happening along this corridor, there's been the discussion with the town board about a moratorium, which was pretty timely for the, for, you know, the fact that we, you know, started wanting to get this going. And it's understood there's some issues, that there's potential about water and sewer coming out of this area. So I guess what I'm asking Scott or the board, is that potential, is that potential exists? I mean, that would be helpful for this site, but, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, if we're gonna get caught up in a moratorium, there's not much this board could do anyway if it limits all sites from Blue Hill Road to the Deconic, which is basically what's on the table now, as I understand, relative to the moratorium. But again, if there's some benefit that's gonna come down the line, well-
Well, typically, if there's enough property owners that want to participate in a formation of a district and bear the burden of that cost, you know? So, you know, that's, that's the discussion that takes place, you know?
Is that, but that's, that's kind of the discussion that is taking place.
Well, it's not taking place yet. It's a discussion that's gonna have to take place.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, 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 in a lot of ways helps and so forth. But I, you know, knowing where the water services exist now relative to the proximity of the site and the water and so forth, that's a pretty long, pretty long haul. So, not to say again that we wouldn't be interested in that, but, you know, it's, it's nice to know what's going on.
And just, I'm sorry, walk me through again what you currently have laid out here. So you've got an L-shaped building to the east.
So what happens is we come in the main entrance and I guess I'll go in a clockwise formation here, counterclockwise rather. So you come on, come to the right, basically you have a sixty-four, sixty-four hundred square foot retail area, okay? Which would probably be phase one as, as it would work out. So we have a building here, the footprint there, you have parking at this location here in the front and then we actually have some ancillary parking in the rear. So again, we haven't phased it out, all right? And that would be part of our next step thing, but we would probably look at probably, you know, like a phase one location there. As you continue on the back, with the fact that it's very wooded and kind of pristine and natural in the back. And I guess I would refer to Gigliotti's site plan down here. Kind of the same thought in that, you know, when you're looking off the back, nothing's gonna happen there. It's wetland. It's, it's kind of nice sitting on the deck in the back, kind of looking at the fact that nothing's gonna happen there in somebody's backyard. Same kind of theory in that there's a restaurant proposed here, five thousand square foot building, okay? Which would be, you know, again, kind of put in the back here. Once you, once you work your way up in grades up to this area, there's a parking area on top. We have a smaller fifteen hundred square foot office spot. Again, the reason the office is there is because it's further away from fifty-two, okay? In terms of the retail in and out, it's more of a desti-, you know, obviously a destination spot, so people would park there, they'd be there for the day theoretically. And then as you make your way further around, again, we have a split and a little bit of retail in the back and then some office. That building is almost ten thousand square foot.
Are these all single-story?
No, they're primarily, I think three of them are two-story, I believe.
Okay. And where's the parking for the restaurant?
We have parking in the back here. This is a defined parking area here as well. And then the office and retail is up top. So we have effectively one, two, three, four areas that are defined for, for parking.
So, the restaurant is coming off the road and they're not looking at the trees? They're looking at the parking lot if they wanted to have like deck seating or something like that?
In the back here.
Okay.
Yeah, the building, this building is a two, because it's, it's kind of, actually works its way back into the hill. So you have that, again, I'll reference Gigliotti. You have that two-story where you walk in the front and then you can also access the rear from the back. That's the way grades work.
So if it's possible to pull the parking out from right behind that building or move the building back and maybe put the parking up towards the circular road, that might be, I don't know how possible that is.
At this stage, we have a lot of options. We're just at the infancy of it, you know?
Before we get to that stage, we need to address the, the, the traffic impacts at this point. I notice there's been no mention of the Route three seventy-six traffic signal plus Blue Hill and that intersection as far as the trip generation, the impacts at those locations.
It's presumed that as part of this environmental review, we're gonna end up doing a full-scale traffic study. I would assume DOT would be asking for that anyway. So that, that's, that goes without question. I think at the end of the day, you know, it would, in terms of trying to, and again, this is, we're here just for the sketch, just for discussion. Once we massage this further and get closer to actual layout and uses that the board's comfortable with and then, then we can lock into those, again, those potential traffic numbers realistically. We don't wanna do it on something that, that may change a little bit, you know?
And I'm sorry, David, are you talking about potentially another traffic lane?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not proposing any mitigation. We don't know what the impacts are. I'm saying it's up, it's incumbent upon the applicant to show the, the impacts and also any mitigation if required. We don't know that at this point.
I think that, that's a point well taken, Mike. I, I just, you mentioned that, but there's not a plan for that.
Right.
Okay.
But, but I think, again, we have a site that needs over two hundred and fifty parking spots and they're providing just under two hundred. I'm a little bit concerned that it's a crowded site, so-
I, I-
As, as you do the traffic generation estimates, I'm not sure how we estimate this. If we know we can only park two hundred cars, but the site actually requires parking for-
Well, we can, well, depending on the land use, we can come up with what the trip generation is. We can assess the impacts at the two, at, let's say, the two adjacent intersections. If mitigation is not possible or is not feasible, then the question of parking is-
But my point is though, you're basing trip gen on what? The number of parking spaces you have or the buildings that you're building?
On, on the land use and the size of the buildings.
It's on the use in the buildings.
It's totally independent of parking.
But you understand my point, right?
Yeah, and I guess it's a question of which is first, the chicken or the egg? And I'm saying that the impacts are gonna determine whether or not the project is even feasible.
The, the, before we, I thought I was clear about it. Before we move forward relative to a traffic study, which is gonna happen.
Right.
Just the way it is, for a job like this, where it is, of its scope. We need to effectively lock in on some kind of a layout, again, that's kind of, we have to address the parking issue. The parking issue may minimize some of the buildings here, may reduce some of the square footage. I don't wanna do a traffic study that ends up with higher estimates on potential traffic, which is not, is not as good for the job, you know? So that we wanna make sure we're effectively kind of locked in on the layout and the parking, all right? And that'll be the next generation as we move forward here. So, yes, I agree, traffic study needs to be done. We will have to take a look at the parking, we'll have to massage this plan a little bit, okay? Without a doubt. We're not, we haven't, we haven't submitted our, our escrows and the vigs and, you know, so I don't wanna get everybody in a, in a tizzy. It, you know, there's, there's work to be done here, you know?
I don't think we're in a tizzy. I think we're just asking questions.
Understood.
The other comment I would have is based on the way you're laying out the uses here, you probably need pedestrian access throughout the site. And I can't tell from back here whether you've already got sidewalks planned or not, but I mean, theoretically, you'd want office to retail space and from office and retail to restaurant space, you probably want walkways. Whether it's along the loop road or however you're building that out.
Yeah, we do, I, I do remember an original iteration, we proposed sidewalks and details and factors and remnants certainly of, of that kind of interconnection on the plan. But a site like this actually promotes that, so the answer's yes.
And then, Mike, the last thing I think I remember when this was before us, once before, I thought that the slope, that somewhere the road profile was actually difficult. So have you, have you figured that out?
Yeah, our profile probably hasn't changed a whole lot. This is a, after, again, we talked about the entrance and this building here, there's a, there's an incline. We have to get to the top somehow. This is our most lenient slope as it relates to this whole ridge that runs across here. So that's what we're proposing on taking that. There's not grading showing on a plan. We did take the plan to that point last time. That'll be part of the real application, the submittal of all the technical construction drawings and so forth, so.
So can you buy yourself more parking if you don't do a loop road? If instead you do just a half, a half of the loop? And get rid of the, get rid of part of that roadway? You can move the building back maybe a little bit and fit more parking?
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look, look, I'll take a look at it, yeah. I mean, again, naturally, we're just trying to stay off the steep slopes that encompass it through here and trying to work with the topography, you know, as best we can, so.
I just, I'm not sure what the rest of that loop does for you, because it doesn't seem like there's any parking pulling off it from past where the L-shaped building to end.
Yeah, I actually kind of thought that it would be more traffic friendly to have that internal loop road network rather than a couple dead ends, but again, we can take a look at it.
Okay.
This is not too far off from what we had originally proposed-
Right.
-back in early two thousand, so.
Do you envision anything like drive-throughs or anything like that? Or is this all pretty much gonna be pedestrian access buildings?
Yeah, I don't, you know, we're not showing pad sites. I don't think from a retail perspective relative to the flight, you know, the visibility as it take, as it comes from fifty-two, I don't think that they would be interested in that.
Okay.
Just because you don't have, again, it's, it's, it's off the beaten path a little bit coming off the road, so.
Any fast food, or any fast food?
I don't envision that. I don't, you know, we're not, I mean, we, when we, when we think restaurants, we're thinking, you know, more of a sit-down. I don't envision that, I don't, you know, we're not, I mean, we, when we, when we think restaurants, we're thinking, you know, more of a sit-down, you know, not a, not a quick in and out type deal. I don't know if, that wouldn't help our traffic either.
Nope.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Dave or Michelle, Scott, Tom?
Um, I just, you should just check your, um, total lot coverage calculation. It's probably okay, but I think we changed that zoning since the last time this was in, it's seventy-five percent now. So you should just check it and the definition with lot coverage. I also had pedestrian accommodations to make sure that you're actually providing connections between all the different buildings. I saw that there were crosswalks, but, um... Town should be copied or included in any of the DOT conversations, so...
Uh, um, yes.
And then once the plan is ready to be, um, progressed beyond sketch plan, I would, uh, recommend that the planning board declare their intent to be the agency. Once we've got a, a plan that's ready to be...
Yeah, I think we want them to be an application in front of us before we do that, but I agree.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have other questions for us?
I don't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is Stone Ridge Commons at Round Hill Road and Route fifty-two.
Guys, ready?
Ready.
Good evening, Mark Day, Day Stacosa, I'm here tonight with Amy Bombadere from my office and Jeff DeGraw from DeGraw and DeHan, architects au extraordinaire. We're here this evening, um, basically he introduced the board to multi-family concept.
Mark, can we just have you grab the hand, Mike, if you don't mind?
Yes. Yes, yes. This project's been around since Chris was a kid, you've all seen it. It was a subdivision, this was a subdivision, um, we had it rezoned to commercial. Mr. DiO's in the office, or sorry, in the, in the audience, and he's lived through it all. And we've been around the horn with this project. It was rezoned to a zone that, uh, John was not able to really, uh, move market-wise. Uh, he approached, uh, town board, got it rezoned, uh, to allow, or I should say amendments to the zone, to allow multi-family. What we're here tonight to kind of give the board a, a picture of is what we're proposing. We're actually proposing two buildings, um, which is bisected by the entry road. Uh, they're all, uh, residential, um, and basically we're proposing, I believe, fifty-four, uh, units altogether. We're proposing parking behind the, uh, Westerly unit and behind and to the side of the Esterly unit. We've preserved the, the conservation easement along Palin Road. With the new zoning, we're able to relocate the building, buildings closer to Route fifty-two. We had, uh, Rich Pearson from John Meyer look at the project from a traffic standpoint. He's concluded and we have, I think, offered a letter basically saying that the, uh, the amount of traffic is less in this project than it was in what was previously, um, let's say, proposed and approved. So the, the traffic counts drop, um, I could talk all night, but it's not gonna work. I, I need to get, uh, Mr. DeGraw up to talk about the design a little bit. As you can see, these guys have spent a lot of time, uh, they've spent a lot of time with the site. They've done some cross-sections to show how it affects the person, uh, which would be on the Stone Ridge property subdivision. So they can talk about the building much better than I and, uh, and explain your approach. We really do hope the board likes this look. As you can see, they've spent quite a bit of time and, um, I'll let them take you from here.
Actually, Mark, uh, Kylie Morris from our office.
Oh, sorry.
To present, so...
Kylie Morris will present, sorry.
And we just got the site up too. So there's two buildings, uh, the building one is at the corner of Palin Road and Route fifty-two. And the second building is down a center access drive to two parking lots. So there's a total of fifty-one units. There's gonna be twenty-four two-bedrooms and twenty-seven one-bedrooms and three floors. Overall building height right now is around thirty-five feet for those two buildings. So we really just...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time, just those numbers?
Sure, yeah, fifty-one units, twenty-four two-bedrooms and twenty-seven one-bedrooms. And the approximate building height right now is thirty-five feet.
Thank you.
Three stories. So the I Park is right across at the corner, so we really wanted to respond to the revitalization that's happening right now with a contemporary design. That'll attract the younger people coming into the area, young professionals, young families, or even people who are looking to downsize into smaller, uh, units in this area. The two-bedroom average is about thirteen hundred square feet right now and the one-bedroom's around nine hundred. And some of the units will have dens as an additional, around a hundred and fifty square feet for those dens that are additional. So that rendering down on the end is pretty much the main, uh, that's our main perspective right now. And that's showing the, uh, corner of, uh, building two on Route fifty-two. And then this aerial shot, you can see the relationship between the two buildings. They're pretty much identical, except for the building at the corner of Palin Road has an additional three stories of one-bedrooms on the end there. And then we tucked the balconies back so that they weren't on the main Route fifty-two, so they're sort of tucked away towards the backside, towards the parking lot. So that they have privacy and also just so they're not right on the main road. And then in response to the, the section, I believe it's below me here, that, the housing that's behind in the cul-de-sac, that section sort of shows how we're handling that with a berm and plantings to sort of seclude the area off from there. And then we'll be doing a lot of evergreens so that they'll be full throughout the year.
As far as the inside of the building, I'm sorry.
No, go, please.
Um, I'm assuming elevators?
Uh, we have an elevator, central elevator in the core for both buildings.
Okay, and do you have central, like, recreation space or...
Yes, actually I think I can turn this plan around. We have like a bike storage area and lounge space on each floor. So I think on the first floor, there's like a postal room for packaging. Then there's a, a lounge when you come out, an elevator, main stairs, some bike storage. And then as you get up to the other floors, it's a similar layout, just other amenities in that area. But all the units will have their own laundry in each unit, so there's no need for like a central laundry or anything like that.
Okay. And these are condo or apartment?
Apartments, I believe, yes, apartments.
And I was, I was gonna ask, uh, first of all, I, I think this is a, an attractive proposal, but, uh, question, I mean, how far down does the sidewalk go? Does it join the sidewalk at like...
It actually goes all the way across the site. It goes from the west all the way over toward, towards the I Park. And we're proposing, uh, across all...
Okay.
But not all the way down to the high school?
Uh, we don't know. We stop at the river.
It's not in the right of way?
No, we're actually, uh, we're in and outside the right of way.
Do you think that the high school students would walk to school from this location?
Yeah, I just don't know how we would, uh... I mean, I could talk to the DOT. I mean, at this point, you wouldn't really need any entrance or any permits other than utilities, but, I mean, you could certainly talk to them. I'm just thinking how far down you want to go.
Well, you've got a crosswalk to get to the high school if you followed yours, the, the north side of fifty-two. There's a crosswalk right at the high school.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I don't, I can't say, I can't say...
It's further down.
It shouldn't necessarily be just your cross to bear, but it's definitely a consideration in as that corridor starts to develop, like you mentioned, I Park and all the rest of that. I mean, pedestrian traffic through there, hopefully when the dome and all that.
Yeah, we'll certainly look at that.
Do you have any recreation on-site, uh, not within the buildings, but any, like, I'm not seeing any, um, I don't know. Playground area, grilling area, um, sport court?
Yeah, we like to, in the past, we put, um, you know, more than likely down this end, there's, there's green space over here and on this end of the building that we could utilize.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe the balconies can, somebody can have a grill on, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't see any kind of, there's really nothing for residents to do here, right?
Certain things.
I'm sorry, they don't use a grill, is that what you're saying? All right. Mark, in the last iteration of the plan, I know it was the commercial layout, there were retention ponds and, uh, where you're showing, uh, it looks like just a grass area here at the top and then also down as the, as the slopes down.
There's a retention basin here and there's one here, so they do remain in...
So this is still a retention basin even though it looks like a field?
Correct, then, that is, that would be, that would be, uh, that's part of it, fine.
Okay, will it, will it be mowed like this shows or is it gonna be a true like retention basin?
Um, it, part of it can be mowed, there may be times of year where it'll hold water, but, uh, but most part it will be maintained.
Okay. It looks like, um, you're showing some very mature trees towards the backside of the property. Are those existing right now, we're just saying we're not gonna disturb them or are you, is this...
No, they're not, there, there would be plants in the...
You would have to plant them.
Yeah, we're proposing berm, um, in, in the career of the property back here, which would help protect...
Oh, I'm sorry, we need the mic, we need you to be on the mic, I apologize, I'm sorry.
We're proposing trees along here on a berm that we, that we're gonna, and it's, it also shows up in, I lost the cross-section. Oh, yeah, you see this cross-section? What, this is at existing residence in Stone Ridge and then this would be the berm, uh, which Kylie mentioned would be, you know, evergreen, so there'd be protection. And then basically this shows you a cross-section of, of what that would look like, um, you know, obviously is, is, uh, in, in full development.
These trees back here are existing and blocking that house, they're, and they are pretty much shown at their full growth as they are right now. And the ones behind on the side going up near the power line, those are existing as well, so for the most part, the full adult trees are the evergreen.
Plantings there, you're just not disturbing those, but you're adding new plantings where you don't have shielding from the second residence, okay?
And still no connection to that road in the back, you're just containing yourself to Palin Road and fifty-two.
Other than that, uh, there's a proposed, um, emergency access.
Oh, that's just emergency?
Yeah, this, this access, um, there is, there is an emergency access at that point.
Oh, oh, to the road, yes.
Right.
What do we have there, is that pervious pavers between the, the pavement coming in? There's, it looks like a little bit of green space between the cul-de-sac and the, the...
Yeah, that's probably gonna be, that'll be pervious pavers.
Have you been, um, I know this is just a sketch, initial sketch plan review, but have you had any conversation at all with the, um, uh, fire advisory board? Because I know there's, these are proposed as three-story buildings, we just want to make sure that they kind of get a, a look at them and, and an understanding.
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess Mr. DiO did meet with them.
I met with the fire advisory board. I met with the fire advisory board. Actually, they brought to my attention that they, they didn't want the parking up to the buildings because it's a three-story, they wouldn't have room to swing the ladder around.
Okay.
So it had to be forty feet, so that's why, you know, you can access it. And if you look at the site plan, we discussed it with them that you can come in either from fifty-two, Palin Road, hit all the backs of the buildings, the sides of the buildings, and fifty-two, you hit from fifty-two. So, yeah, we did meet with them and they were, they were fine with everything.
Okay.
One of the things I failed to mention is this site actually has, uh, less and, less pervious than the original plan.
Right.
Right. Mark, you mentioned about the conservation easement along Palin Road, but it looks like, I don't remember there being an access on Palin Road. Did we have an access approved for the commercial site too? And this is the same, same access?
Same.
You haven't moved its location or anything like that?
Haven't toyed with it one bit, still the same.
Okay, it kind of jumped out at me, you have four spots kind of, as you come in from Palin Road, there's four or five parking spots just kind of sitting, no sidewalk or anything connecting them anywhere. Are they for a specific use or they just...
Basically visitor, you know, we assumed it to be visitor parking, you know, if somebody had, if they had visitors, this would be the place if, if for some reason it was full. I mean, we could certainly connect it with a sidewalk.
Okay. I guess, I mean, in inclement weather, right, that's a, if there was a little sidewalk connection, that might be easier, even if you just connected it to the, to the side, other side of the parking lot.
Okay, we can do it.
How many parking spaces are there?
Um, yeah, there's a hundred and, there's more than enough, I know we're over.
No, I just curious.
Yeah, we're over.
Michelle, have we done any, um, any analysis of our multi-family parking here to just see what our experience is? Whether it's what I, we currently require and code is sufficient? I know we, it's different times we've reviewed different...
Yeah, I, we never did the multi-family, no.
Is there, uh, are there standards for that? Do, I'm assuming there's standards somewhere for it? Do you know if our code is in line with what today's recommendations are?
Um, I, I don't know for sure and I don't know if millennial housing would require anything less, do you know, Dave, up above your head, or is it still just the same?
But it's never more than, usually more.
One and one and a half for two bedrooms? It's usually one for one and one and a half for two.
Okay.
Where's the refuse? Where's the refuse containers now?
Oh, refuse, there's one in the back down here and there's one here. So there's one site, they both have recycling.
I'm sorry, Mark, I was looking down at, can you just point them out again?
There's one here and there's one back here.
Okay.
So there's one for each, uh, we did talk...
Oh, I see, you got them found out.
We talked to Royal, um, early on and they recommended this size. These both have recycling bins, so, you know, you'll go have, you'll have standard and then you'll have recycling, uh, bins as well.
And you've got the sidewalks that go to each of those locations from the buildings.
Yep.
Mark, the, I noticed the turnaround is not connected to the thing, I mean, has there been any thought of like just creating a walkway that, you know, because again, there's...
Oh, you mean...
There's all the Stone Ridge houses and then there's all the houses beyond that, as well as then you start to get some of the houses across, I mean, you know, nobody can walk on Palin Road because you take your life in your hands. But that would create a walkway that would actually begin to foster people walking.
Yeah, we could certainly, you know, put a sidewalk connection there. We kind of really just wanted to present it tonight, get a feel for the, from the board, what do you, I mean, do you like the concept? Uh, we would like to obviously move forward with the application, uh, go, go to the ARB, um, you know, to work that out while, while we come back to you and, um...
Michelle, just as far as, um, procedural for the board, this is currently, has an approval for the commercial site, so this would be, would this, it's not, doesn't really have an existing use because it wasn't built, but it was, is it still considered a change of use in addition to...
It's just a, it's, it's not a change of use because it's not built, so it's just a...
Okay, so is this an accepted use within this zone or does it need any kind of zone? Okay, so is this an accepted use within this zone or does it need any kind of zoning?
Yes, there's a new zoning that was passed that permits them.
We also need special use, I believe, under the.
Yeah, it's a special use permit that was, that was created.
And, and, Mark, you've got no, no other setback issues or anything like that, you're within zoning, within code for everything else?
Yeah, actually, the buildings can be closer to the, to 52, we chose to pull them back slightly.
You know, I noticed all the commercial uses that were proposed really kind of struggled, whereas this is, seems like a more natural use of the place.
We think, we think this is, you know, as everybody knows in town, there's not too many apartments. And we think this is in a good location, you're close to eighty-four, you're close to the Taconic, you know, it's, it's, we think it's a good location, we think it's a good use. And I think, I think the buildings that Kylie's showing you tonight, I mean, I think it's, it's a wow. I mean, you don't have this in town and I think it's pretty hot, technically speaking, it's pretty hot. No, it is, it's.
So just with regard to the buildings themselves, I guess, one thing that just kind of jumps out, the top balcony is not shown as enclosed?
We don't like that.
Or with a roof?
It's a little bit, it's called a risque apartment, it gives you the option if you want to tie off, we will show it enclosed.
I haven't, I mean, enclosed wasn't exactly, I meant with a roof.
With a roof?
Like you're showing it with slats instead of a roof.
So like a pergola right now, just, yeah, I mean, that can definitely change, that was just for the sake of the rendering right now.
Okay, and then the other question I would have is, in this area with seasons, is there a consideration to make them screened or not?
I wouldn't do that.
Probably not.
It could, but that wasn't.
I think you couldn't grill on them if you had them screened, but I'm just, I wasn't sure if this was actual plan or if this is a, like a spec plan as far, as far as the elevations go.
It's, it's still conceptual at this moment, I'd say, certainly can keep being developed.
I mean, it seems like the interiors would be pretty light, so you've got a lot of windows, to me, it seems, uh...
And they come right out onto 52, which I think is key, I mean, it's, you know, again, it's not that setback thing that, you know, as we're trying to create the feel of 52 as, as a corridor.
Yeah. I mean, definitely you'd want to go to the ARB, right, just to make sure you have materials and finish and things like that. But generally, as long as the FAB has looked at this and they're comfortable with the way you're proposing the, the roof structure and the heights of the building. I know it's within code, but let's just make sure that they understand and that, you know, if they have to, hopefully would never have to. But if they had to be at this site for an emergency, that they know that their equipment is going to be able to work for the site.
Right, and these are, these will be sprinkled.
Okay. And then the standard, you know, landscaping and lighting and things like that, you know, we would obviously have to, as you get further along, we would, we would work more on things like that.
Okay.
Scott, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm assuming that drainage would be less for this type of building, drainage requirements, so that the original retention.
Well, it's not so much the type of the building, it's the impervious. So I think Mark said that it's actually less impervious surface, was that correct, Mark? Did you say it was less impervious?
It is, it is less impervious than.
So there shouldn't be any negative impact?
We haven't had any change in the laws since the last time we looked at this as far as the MS4 requirements or anything like that. Okay.
Not in terms of water storage, anyway.
And Mark, you said they're sprinkled?
Yes, they will be fully sprinkled. We are going to be making connection to central water and central sewer. I think the, the last plan you saw had individual sewer, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
How about I like it?
I, 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 by the way, I think it's very attractive, very, very nice.
Dave, Michelle, anything else to go over?
Um, Mark, have you visited DOT in the county, just to confirm?
I'm sorry.
Have you visited DOT in the county?
Yeah, it is.
Not, not, not as of yet, the original, the last approval we had, remember this, that entrance is installed.
On 52.
God, they did.
But that was a conceptual, like, in.
No, that was a final, that was installed.
Yeah. On 52, yes, that was installed, the one on Palin Road.
Right, we never saw a permit because we didn't build it.
Right, but that, but that, um.
That's county.
That county.
That's a county road.
County letter was conceptual approval for that.
Right, we just never, we never pulled it because we didn't build anything here.
I would say you need to.
Yeah, we will, absolutely revisit it.
Yeah.
And the county was okay with that left turn on Palin, heading north, crossing three lanes?
Yes, that's the one.
You vetted that out already?
That was the one.
The only thing we're not funding is the left end.
They specifically said there would be no left end.
No left end, but you can make the left out crossing the three lanes. And the county said that's okay.
So you might want to just.
We will revisit, because we have to see if we made.
We're still going to have to apply for a permit, and we'll talk to, and we'll talk to DOT.
Michelle, anything else? Scott? Tom?
Nope.
All right. Thank you for sharing this with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was the last item on our agenda tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, just before you.
I have a motion in a second.
Madam Chair, before you, I want to introduce our mystery guest. This is Michael Cunningham, who works with me and.
I'm sorry, there's, I'm sorry, folks, folks, our meeting's not adjourned yet, if we could just have quiet?
It's Michael Cunningham, an attorney, works with me and I brought him here tonight to introduce him to you and the board and he'll be working together with us over the course of the future.
Welcome.
Well, Michael.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Okay, now do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.